It is now nine thirty-one and I thank you for everyone's patience. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole, meeting of September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, to order. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper, on Treaty Six in eight territories, as well as Metis Region Four. This being our last Committee of the Whole before a day of truth and reconciliation. I wanted to thank our staff for doing our daily posts on our Facebook page. And for those of you that are interested in coming together to celebrate our kinship with those whom we have in memory and face the terrible tragedies of our past. There is going to be a gathering on Friday, I believe between one and two. Right now, I would suggest that we stay posted to our website. For more information, there's a link through the Facebook page as well as on the webpage. I would like to reach out to council here to see if there are any additions to the agenda. Counselor Calhoun?
I was wondering if Mr. Viven on the agenda would be able to give an update on the cable installation of either operating on the precious stream. There is some misinformation out there, so anybody can fix the information.
What number on the table? Any other additions to the agenda? Yours?
I would suggest that under item four on the agenda, that in these unusual circumstances, we perhaps have a motion to approve the minutes from the last Committee of the Whole. We're going to proceed with today's meeting, but by circumstance, we didn't have a regular meeting last week where typically we would have approved the minutes from the thirteenth, and we won't actually get an approval later today if it stays the way we are. So a slight variation from our process, but I would recommend that we approve those minutes as an order of business survey today, so that we can get on with with today's discussions having already approved minutes from two weeks ago.
Might I suggest we do that at four point zero? Just have that as four point, we can move on business. Okay. Any other additions? Yours?
That as an addition to the agenda and not in any way to overshadow the acknowledgement and the recognition of the importance of Friday for truth and reconciliation. But today's September twenty-seventh happens to be World Tourism Day. And in a tourism community, we ought to acknowledge the importance of World Tourism Day. It's proclaimed by the United Nations and has been since nineteen eighty, although we rarely celebrate it. But it happens to be today. Acknowledge that and acknowledge the contributions that tourism makes to our community every day of the year.
Thank you. And thank you, perhaps maybe I was saving that for you for this afternoon, but not to steal your thought. But I appreciate that and like to move on to Agenda Item Three, if that's all that we have to add. Counselor Mallon, did you have anything to add for today's agenda?
Um, Chief Kiamata.
Which 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 means?
Which means good morning, how are you? And for those of you who had the opportunity to take a look at the Aboriginal of the thirty days of recognition, that was one of the greetings that you could learn this morning.
Very good. I'm glad that you got your parish in Doffington.
And thank you for allowing to start the meeting without me. Sorry, Emily.
All right. I would like to add just one note under upcoming events to discuss the HERPA Parks and Recreation Conference in Jasper in October and to see if we should add that to a future agenda. I'll just leave that at the end of our comments. All right. So now we can move to Agenda Item Three. I have approval of the agenda with the addition of four point zero and seven point seven and the addition to upcoming events. Counselor Calhoun, on favor? Who is that motion's carry? Great. That moves us to four point zero, approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes from September thirteen. Does anybody have any corrections or comments to make? Before we move? Great, may I have a mover? Counselor Hall, on favor? Now, who's now wishes carry? Four point one, businesses rising, business arising for the minutes. Everyone wants to be efficient today, that's good. Right. Normally, we now go to Delegations Number Five, but I think we can incorporate Agenda Item Four or Five and Six together because there are some members of the community that have written in and have been invited to speak. So having understood that, I think that we can go from Agenda Item Five to Agenda Item Six and have the members of the community come and speak if they wish to the correspondence. So Ms. Wana, seeing as that you're six point one on the agenda, may I invite you to come and speak to us, please? Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Raffin. Like that? Okay. Hello, Mayor, Council Administration. I want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to be here today. For anyone who doesn't know me, my husband and I have owned and operated Coop's Cafe since two thousand and seven. Oh, I wish it would have gone. Fifteen years of being immersed in supporting and uplifting our beautiful mountain town, both personally and professionally, I absolutely love Jasper and I love my role in helping Jasper continually grow and move forward. Pardon me. I trust you've all read the letter I sent regarding my disappointment in the lack of engagement with Jasper businesses during the Chatham Empire crisis. There was zero communication with any of us, by anyone from town. Listening to the narrative, now is not the time, over and over and over again, became so absolutely devastating to hear, which could have been eased if there was any attempt to work with us to help us understand where we could then be more patient, both the process and the outcome. While I fully understand the fire and future fires to come, because there will be more, our volatile and food situations, which are hard to predict, some sort of aim or objective would have been most appreciated to help in our decision-making. This needs to be standard protocol to keep Jasper's businesses and community in the loop during a crisis. We didn't know what to do. We were left, pardon me, we were left to contemplate arranging our own power, should this continue for weeks or possibly months? Not knowing if we were going to put in, be put onto generator power or not for this extended time? Not knowing the process was going to, what the process is going to be? Many small businesses rushed on getting generators to survive at a huge expense, fifteen thousand dollars a month and upwards of five hundred dollars a day in gas, as well as administration and insulation fees. Completely unsustainable for the fact that we just came out of two years of a pandemic and we have no savings. As well, now is not the time was pushed and we lost our busiest day of the week, our busiest month of the year, the only month of the year that most the businesses make any sort of profit. Completely decimated. It makes me so angry to think that COVID has left you, our local government, with a publicly accepted tool to shut down our local economy to buy space and time. Jasper businesses owners need the ability to sustain ourselves through hardship the same way we need to eat, and the general public needs to understand that. For myself and I know others, the elation of the power being restored so quickly was overshadowed by very real COVID PTSD we are suffering, and now more financial burden with no support in sight. The amount of coke was lost in dollars may seem super small to some, but it was actually, it's crippling to us. This is interruption insurance is out because there's no physical damage to our building and none of us or our employees are hurt or sick. And I know now there's businesses are having to argue getting wildfire insurance or have already been denied support, some in part due to no state of emergency being declared, which changes what claims we are allowed to make. This is our reality, and I know we're not alone in having to again adapt and figure out how to make it through this, another kick in our already strained faith account. Jasper businesses deserve to be informed, however that might look during any major crisis. Operating a business is difficult, it's expensive, we've now survived COVID, we deal with parks, we deal with the rising cost of operating, and the lack of support offered to us during the Chatham Fire needs to be accounted for and corrected. The municipality needs to have a business-specific liaison, not all businesses are part of the Chamber or Tourism Jasper, but all are active members of keeping Jasper's economy thriving. I want to see this dealt with in a timely manner, it's only a matter of time until there is another fire. I want to thank you for your time. Lastly, I do want to add, I was brought to my attention this morning that I don't know if the Muni or Administration that there is some sort of disaster relief that Jasper has received, and I want to know where that is and how we get it and why we don't know about it.
Thank you, Ms. Wana. I think there was a question directed at the administration.
Sure. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Dela. So to be clear, the municipal affairs received no fundamental support of any government for any year.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's why I asked, at the game of telephone, I'm like, I'm half boat at the source.
I understood one of the comments that came from the Ministry. I believe it was from Municipal Municipal Affairs that they were going to try to provide some funding outside of what may be available insurance through insurance providers. But I haven't heard anything. It's a question.
Deputy Mayor Demoda, maybe all the people that, and that's a non-people as well. So the Ministry of Municipal Affairs identified that they may consider implementing a disaster recovery program. And so that's up to the administration of the Municipal Affairs and whether they wish to do that or not. I think council and emergency committee have already made the case, this is an extraordinary thing. Under the disaster recovery program, the program.
Mister, if I may, I can barely hear you from here, so I'm not sure if there are any reasons to add up there. It is lit. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's, that's good, thanks Deputy Mayor Dela, thank you. So just to, I'll wind that back. The Emergency Advisory Committee did highlight to the Minister of Municipal Affairs the significant impact that this had on the local community and on businesses. The minister said that they may consider establishing a disaster recovery program, but that determination is up to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. And under that program, it is there to cover uninsurable losses, so losses for which there was no insurance readily available. And it is a backstop after legal recourse. And so the government is there to cover things that couldn't be covered by anybody else who you, who a applicant can't make somebody else accountable for through legal remedy. This is actually really specifically spelled out in the regulation. So I just want to make sure that we temper the community and council's expectations of if the government decides to establish a disaster recovery program, and that's, there's an if there first, what that program might cover. And it really will only cover if someone can identify that they could not have insured the losses that they found. Or if the, there's no legal remedy available, you know, essentially suing somebody for those costs. The government wants any parties, including the municipality, that had unexpected costs, to first go to every other source of payment before going to the government. So we should expect that if the government establishes such a program, that it will not be a short road. There's no cash grant that comes to the municipality or to individual businesses. And I had an opportunity at the Alberta Municipalities Conference actually to speak with the CEO of high level, who more than two years later is still dealing with the government on expenses related to their fire, which resulted in evacuation of the community. So obviously, it's significantly different situation than we experienced here. And that municipality is still dealing with Municipal Affairs, provincial government officials more than two years after the fact. So if a program is established by the government, there are significant restrictions on what it will provide for in expenses. And it is not a short and narrow path. I think just important context for everybody in the future.
Okay, I don't know if I'm going to ask on small business behalf, but to stay connected to that information that might come through, would that be made through community development in our community? Who would be advocating for keeping that alive with the with the ministry?
That would be, is a part of the process of our consent command. The finance team is working with those provincial officials and our reps from Alberta Emergency Management. And as I said, that this, you know, if something like that comes, that it is not something that I would expect in the term. And as I said, I think the biggest, the biggest challenge that the ministry identified to us was that they had to be for losses that were uninsurable. If there was insurance available in the marketplace and the business owner didn't have the correct kind of insurance or chose not to have that type of insurance, then it appears, and this is what ministry officials have related and what says in legislation, that those types of losses are not something of a problem. Again, just to really temper everybody's expectations. And it is the, the program's called the Disaster Recovery Program. Those that are interested could look at the program details on the government's website and the legislation that's there, so they can see firsthand what those guidelines are. Again, it really depends first on the minister choosing whether or not to declare such.
Thank you, Mr. Viven, I appreciate the clarification on that. Do any other counselors go ahead? Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you Lynn for coming today. I appreciate and understand the struggles of businesses, I truly do. I was also very proud of our team for how they communicated with our residents. It felt like as info came in, info went out. That being said, as an organization, we're always striving to be better. Relationships, organizational excellence, community helper, all part of our priorities. And questions be like, what is an ideal solution for you and what would you like us as council to do? There needs to be.
Your line.
I agree, I think.
Yeah.
There needs to be someone appointed to the businesses. And however that looks, that's not my job to figure that out, it's you as a council. We are the majority taxpayers, we pay the most utilities, we, we keep the Jasper townsite a town. We are entitled, and I hate that word, but we are entitled to, however it might look, an email. There's no reason in this digital world that it's not like somebody had to get on the phone and phone all hundred and sixty of us or whatever it is. We are entitled to some level of communication to keep us informed. And my argument with this wasn't even if the outcome isn't exactly the same, that we got some level of, we don't even know what's going on, we apologize and we will let you know. That would make us feel better because at least there's acknowledgement of, we understand that you are a part of this, you know, bigger picture, and there was none of that. And I do also want to add, one hundred percent, I am, as a resident, I'm very all the work that you guys and the emergency crew and Atco and everybody did was communication with that end of things was absolutely amazing and we do thank you for that.
Thank you for that, thank you for the question. Counselor Wilson had his hand up and then the council.
To follow up with that statement, what further information? Look, okay, so I want to say that all business owners are residents and you suggested that we did an excellent job or the E C C did an excellent job informing residents two, three, four times a day. Every business owner is a resident. What are you or what, what, what businesses are entitled for to more information? There was no more information than was shared with council and residents. Council didn't get any more information from Atco, from the E C C. Everybody was like informed immediately, residents were informed. So that in turn is business owners were informed. And if you just said the residents did an, or we did an excellent job informing residents, we did an excellent job informing small business. What are you as a small tourism business entitled to over everybody else? Like, that's my challenge there, I can't, I'm not going to sit here and have shout at us suggesting we're entitled for more information. It was so like hour by hour, and that information was shared. Atco didn't even know when the power could be on, they were working their asses off to get it back on. And they did, and they got it done in a week rather than three weeks, and we should be celebrating that. I'm sorry.
No, and there's a piece of me that agrees with that, but what I, what is what lacked was like I faced because I was able to be open because of our COVID laws, and there's another reason why I can't get insurance because I was in the middle of a pharmacy and it's just a busy, busy money situation. I had power a lot of the times when other people didn't. I can't afford to be closed. If I have power to be open, and then I faced backlash saying, I was, I should not be open. I should not be open because the power coming into town right now should be for the residents. And we're hearing that constantly, so my livelihood is cut off as everyone sits around and collects paychecks, not everyone, but like I have no form of supporting myself. And then I'm being, if I'm, I have the ability to be open and then I'm being told that I should close. Specifically, there was a newsreel where Mr. Mayor Ireland said like, we would ask the businesses to please respect the fact we're trying to get the residents up and running. I cannot afford, tell us, Atco, bad example, but rent, like that stuff doesn't go away. Like I, if I have the ability to be open, I have to be open. And it's, there was no communication, like I'm being told I should be closed, but I have power, I can be open. I and this is where that communication, it's just that lack of like, what do we do, what's right, what's wrong? And it could have been communicated with us.
Thank you for the question, thank you for the comments. Before I go to Counselor Waxer, I think that Director Nell had some comments to follow along. Where we are.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demoda, I don't mean to insert myself in a part of the conversation that is dedicated to council asking questions, but there was just a bit of a misstatement of fact that I felt important to clarify. We came out with a very strong message that now was not the time to visit Jasper. We deliberately stayed away from telling businesses whether to open or not. That was not our role in that emergency, there was a utility service, electricity provided by a third-party provider, which we liaised with to ensure that the best service was provided and restored for the community. But certainly, the municipality did not indicate to businesses to open or close, that was entirely your own decision, which I appreciate was, it's very difficult. And so the message was to tell visitors not to come essentially, because we just couldn't support them. But having that said, I absolutely respect and appreciate your point that people need to eat. There were people in town, there were locals in town that didn't have power, there were visitors that needed the service and I I understand your business decision for doing so and that, and if people were telling you to close, that certainly didn't come from our from our end or from parks or from Atco, we do need some services to keep the town going and restaurants is, is a good part of them, so. But certainly, as I said, the message was for visitors not to come, not for businesses to stay open or closed. That was unfortunately left to each business to make their own decision on that.
Thank you, Director Nell. Appreciate the clarification there, Ms. Wana, if you wanted to add some.
I was just going to say too, and again, it's, I understand what you're saying, but you're telling businesses, you're telling visitors to stay on local news and on your, our local Facebook pages, like people are coming from all over the world, they don't watch or follow that. Like the day we stayed open, we ended up having to close, we couldn't handle it. There was people here and we were just, we were too small and it like literally was it, we couldn't get more supplies, we could, like we couldn't stay open because it was too busy. There was people here that had no idea, especially it wasn't smoky, there was like in town, there was no from the outward looking in, you wouldn't know there was anything wrong. So there definitely was people in town. And yeah, like I know when I go on vacation, I don't want to watch the local news, I don't, I'm not on their local Facebook page. Like it's not, you know, it's, yeah, and, and asking visitors not to come, we're a tourist town. We rely on that tourism. Asking visitors not to come is effectively holding our doors.
Great. I do, I would just to support the, the argument on the other side, and I'm not here. In our last council meeting that I was chairing, I did try to remind people that there was still an active fire and it was a great day. And with the way things change, we witnessed several municipalities in Alberta that had fires that started at the same distance away from town and with the change of wind, they were evacuating people that same day. So there was that threat, even though we kind of had a false sense of security that it was going in the opposite direction. We were also dealing with power outage at the same time. And I think that with the amount of resources that are tapped out on those sides, there's so many things going on behind the scenes, there's so many people working in multiple directions that obviously there were going to be gaps. And I think that, you know, you coming forward here is addressing one of those gaps and could we do better the next time around? Absolutely, this is a huge living lesson for a lot of people, unfortunately, it's coming to the loss of some, and you know, I suffer too. But you don't, you just, it's one of those things that needs to be a little bit more resilient. And I think that going through this together, hopefully, we can work with each other to make things better for the future. And you know, I'm very sorry that you had to face that personally, because I saw a lot of people struggle and some people are still struggling. Some people are bearing them better just because of their location and their business model and, and what they offer. So providing food is different than providing liquor or, you know, other services in the community. So it's, it's about understanding each other and working together to, to help each other for the future. And I think, you know, this is going to help us be better and get real. Counselor Waxer?
Thank you again, Lynn. As, as I have family who've been affected by the hurricane Fiona, I've been listening to the to the conversations or the new, the press releases with the Premier of Prince Edward Island. And at one of the press conferences, he spoke, he was questioned as to why he had not yet called the local state of emergency. And his answer was that a local, he did not require additional power, additional powers in order to deal with the emergency at hand. And he referenced the fact that Port of Assmootland required it because of the need to evacuate and that communities in the in Nova Scotia required it because of price gouging and a need to price fix. So I'm wondering. So I'm wondering if you referenced that insurance had not, was recruiting people. Because there wasn't a local state of emergency. And that seemed at odds with what the. What the premier in the E I spoke to. And I wonder if the administration could speak to the Alberta context of the local state of emergency.
Um, I just to clarify, it, what I referenced was that it would change what insurance we could apply or go after. Apply for. Not that, I mean, you guys have your reasons for not doing that. And that's, I, again, as a resident, and I'll, I'll stand behind that. But it was just a comment that, like, I don't, and I can only speak for myself. I know other people are dealing with insurance issues, but. I, there's no insurance for me because my insurance considers it a power outage, not a wildfire. So in that, my business interruption insurance says because there's no physical damage to my building. And myself, my family, my, my staff, nobody is hurt or injured or sick. I do not qualify for business interruption insurance. Because that's all, because, because of all my catering, I do own generators. So I was able to immediately, even when we didn't have power, plug my bridge in. I am lucky enough that I didn't lose anything in my bridges. But I lost a significant amount of sales. And unfortunately, and I said, it's, it's in the big scheme of things, it's not a lot of money. But to myself as a small business, it was the, the difference of like, I had to ask my staff to wait to get paid.
Thank you for that. Counselor Waxer, you had a question for administration on getting clarification with the province and state of emergency.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Waxer. We did investigate the impact of a state of local emergency on insurance, either for, for individuals or businesses. And we did so twice during the incident. And then following the reception of Ms. Wannup's letter, we confirmed again with the province. That the state of local emergency shouldn't have any bearing on people's ability to get insurance. Now, having that said, I think the state of local emergency, as Counselor Waxer outlined, is in order to give us some special powers. So for example, to enter property that we usually wouldn't be able to do that, but in the event of an emergency that we might wanna. Get in or ordering an evacuation is probably the most common reason why we would. Fixing prices is another. And I think just maybe the misunderstanding around the soul is that. You, you declare a soul for a specific purpose, which is that power or authority you're looking for, which could or couldn't have an impact on other parts of town. So imagine a toxic spill on the west side of town where we would have to have a partial evacuation of that area. Even if we declare a state of local emergency to address that situation, still wouldn't have any bearing on hotels or businesses or other parts of town. I've also been learning a bit more about insurance and how that works. And being covered for natural disasters generally could be different than being covered for a wildfire. Which could be different than being covered for a power outage. And so, and I think that's what Mr. Given was trying to refer to in terms of if a commercially available insurance product is available. To cover those losses, even if we had declared a soul, you might still not be eligible under disaster recovery. Limiting access to physical premises is, is something that can happen without a soul. Imagine some incident that law enforcement needs to barricade part of the street and therefore we'd be considered. As not letting people have access to your business, that might trigger other insurance requirements and that is not related to a state of local emergency. So it's a, it's a tool that's in our toolbox that is a provincial item, which, which varies slightly province by province. But is, is very similar across the country, but refers back to the Emergency Management Act in each jurisdiction. But certainly, we didn't require the powers, so we didn't use the state of local emergency, but we had confirmed with the province. And again, what the province enacts versus how insurance companies might address those claims with their clients could be two different things. But we were quite confident that not declaring a soul would not impact our business community's ability, ability to claim.
Okay, well, I thank you for that. It's quite informative and a good learning session for us. Anyway, I've learned quite a bit today. You know, what, what's at stake here and then also the information available from the province. I had Mayor Ireland first, and then if you'd like to speak, Congressman Volker.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Ms. Wannup, I, I do appreciate the hardship and I know it comes on the heels of two years of pandemic, which has also been. A hardship. You indicate in your letter that it was understandable that we encouraged visitors not to come. Your letter says forcibly, I'm sure you didn't force anybody out and you didn't force them not to get in. But our language was clear and direct. Now is not the time. That was necessary and I think you understand that it was not unreasonable. The words that I used several days in a row was that the situation was precarious. And it wasn't just the wildfire, it was the power outage specifically. We were concerned, principally concerned about an evacuation. And that evacuation might be precipitated by loss of power to in particular the wastewater treatment plant. And in fact, we did have several hours late one night, three hours or thereabouts. Where the backup generator was down and there was no power being generated by ATO at the time. We pumped, I think, about two hundred and fifty cubic meters of untreated waste into a decommissioned room. That is not sustainable. We're in a national park next to a Canadian heritage river. We can't do that. We, we managed and we had to report, of course, to other environment. But we were so close to looking at an evacuation. I cannot imagine how difficult it would be to evacuate five thousand residents, let alone another twenty thousand visitors. We had no capacity to deal with numbers of, of that nature. And so. Discouraging visitation was the most reasonable thing we could have done. And I appreciate it. Of course, it has, and in fact, we're a tourism community. But the realistic options were to invite people in and then try and turn them around if we lost power. That was just not an option that we could have. So we made decisions and I appreciate that they had negative impacts on. On business and that is regrettable. But looking back, I'm confident that we made. Reasonable and informed and right decision. I, I want to support Counselor Wilson and his support for our staff. I think they did a fantastic job of informing residents. And as Counselor Wilson said, if we take the entire. Circle of residents, a subset are residents who own business. But if we were informing residents. Then we were informing the community in every capacity. And it was challenging. Things were unfolding rapidly. As Counselor Wilson said, four times a day, we were getting close up. There would be a briefing in the morning. Staff would have to be part of that briefing. And then within a very short time, every morning, eleven o'clock, there was a media screen electronically. Where we would have a prepared statement that we prepared to answer questions. And that went on day after day after day. And then when that wasn't happening, our staff was doing all the good to keep. Residents informed of what was going on. And that includes a question, you as a resident. There was no other information to give you as a business owner that we weren't already given. We didn't know. Many of the things that were, were unfolding, nobody did. When particularly power went from back on. Counselor Wilson has had an advantage of actually taking a tour of the ATO. Site since. And what we heard from ATO repeatedly was that it was complex. And it was, we're not experts in it. And it turns out, they, they said every day, our crews, our crews are working safely. I now find out that they were working with cooling mechanism that goes down to minus two hundred and sixty degrees Celsius. I can imagine how dangerous that might be to work there. So yes, it took some time. It was complex. We didn't know the details. But we responded as, as best we could. So that's, that's just a perspective. And I appreciate that not all businesses are members of the same association. Very difficult for us to individualize our attention to each individual business that is not a member of another organization. But we felt that was covered by informing you as a resident, whether you had your, your business hat on or otherwise. And I'm not sure that there is anything more we could have communicated. And our, our staff in my view, did an absolutely tremendous job. In that, in that realm of communication. The one thing I do want to ask you about, though, is again, this. Suggestion that insurance has been denied. Because of the absence of a declaration of a state of local emergency. And if you have a letter from an insurer or an adjuster that says that, I would be very happy to read it. I appreciate that in many policies, there is a civil authority clause. As Mr. Dawn indicated, typically that is, that applies when a civil authority. Prevents you from having access to your business. It's not contingent on a state of local emergency. Because your business could be part of a fire scene, as she referenced. Could be a gas leak in the building next door and you're only to evacuate by a civil authority without a state of local emergency. And you can't, but you've got insurance for that. But that didn't happen. So insurance companies, I think, are saying, if there's anything at all. Yeah, that clause doesn't apply because the civil authority never actually told you that you couldn't have access to your business. And as you said, you wouldn't want that. You need to go there. And we understood that you needed to go there. So you weren't inclined to close your business. Or to say you couldn't have access. So that, I appreciate that that part of the policy doesn't apply. But it's not for want of a declaration of state of local emergency in my view. But if you've got something from an insurer. I would be very happy to see that and, and work with you to see whether that might be adjusted. I don't believe that there is provision for an insurance company to say that. That there has to be a declaration of a state of local emergency in order for you to have business interruption or loss. But I would be happy to work with you if you thought such a way. So if you have that, please let us know and we'll, we'll take that.
Thank you, Urs. It was very informative as well. Counselor Hall, I have you next, and then that will be Counselor Mott. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just have a quick question maybe for administration. I wonder if a, a solution or the simplest solution would be, you know, when you get your business license, you attach your email to it. And it just becomes another form of communication. I, I mean, you wouldn't, as Counselor Wilson said, Mayor Ireland, you wouldn't have got any different information. But maybe you're so busy, you're not on Facebook, you're not on the website, your email, just another form. Would that be? I, I, I don't know how difficult that would be, but that maybe could be another stream of communication. And again, you wouldn't. Wouldn't have got anything different, but you would have, you would have, you would have got information.
I always give that directly to my administration. Well, before I go to you, I, I know that I signed up for our alerts. And that seemed to work better for some people than others.
Yeah, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Demota for Counselor Hall. Yeah, it's certainly something that we can look at. As you said, I think a number of people and everything everybody's recognized, the municipality is always trying to do better. And so if there's an opportunity to add that as another channel of communication, we can examine that. And as you just said yourself, the municipality also tried to make use of our emergency alert system. Which allows anybody to control the types of alerts that they'd like to receive. And you can sign up for on our websites that you receive those actually as a text message when there's new information. There are some limitations to that, about the, the volume of information that we can put in a text through that system. But it does allow people to choose to receive that information directly into their cell phone. And so that's, that's another option that's available in our toolbox. But adding new tools into our toolbox, like, you know. Adding the email distribution list for businesses is something that we can examine.
I found that one of the most frustrating things on the Alberta emergency alert system was that when our coverage. Power issues, it's always on our app, they stab people. So you're getting alerts, you're thinking it's addressing your community. And all of a sudden, it's like Manitowoc, Saskatchewan. And I found that a little bit frustrating. So there could be some learning lessons from the problems there. My own microphone's kind of me off. Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota and thank you for the presentation. In the conversation that's evolved here, you had talked about setting up a system. Somebody dedicated to contacting business. I think through this conversation, we. You know, there's opportunities maybe through an email system where that could occur through a business license, which may address that. I also would encourage, this is after the fact, and twenty twenty is never great. Twenty twenty hindsight is never great. The chamber is a, as a communication venue. But also Chamber Resorts is insurance wise. I'm just saying it's a resource. There is also an insurance ombudsman for Canada. And Mayor Ireland had made an offer to review a letter. You still have an opportunity to appeal to an insurance ombudsman. If you feel your insurance company hasn't treated you properly. And, and I'm saying this for the public record. Because all businesses have that opportunity, whether their insurance company is, is appropriate or not. You know, we came through a tough period of time. Supplies were still coming into town. We were dealing with things on a ever changing basis. But in closing, I would like to recognize, I do know that even in the middle of all this. You took the time to supply some breakfast to one of the municipal. One of the municipal installations, two, three days after, after the power went out. And I think you need to be complimented on that because that shows a compassion and a commitment to the community. And I just want that to be recognized publicly.
Quite emotional time now. I appreciate that we're talking about this extensively. And normally we, we have kind of time limitations on delegations. And, and not that I, I want to diminish the conversation or cut it short. I, I am reminded that there are other people waiting to speak here. And I'm not cutting the conversation off. I'm just being cognizant of other people in the, in the gallery as well. So if you'd like to comment on that, I'd like to, to close.
Yeah, I was gonna actually say, like, I just, I think my letter and what I've said today, I think it revokes some amazing conversation. But in the end, what I'm asking for is communication to the business, businesses, business community story. In time of crisis, whether that be an email or whatever. That is what my outcome that I'm asking for. And a side note that the chamber did not contact us in the business, even members in this crisis. And I'm not sure why I can't say, I have no idea. But the chamber was, did not reach out.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Not being an apologist or representative of the chamber. What I have heard was that the chamber, like everybody else, was suffering from a whole ATO power. So it was difficult for them to get messages out, is, is my understanding. So I'm not sure whether you remember or, or not of the chamber. But they were challenged, as were others. Whether that could be fixed, I don't know. I just want to be abundantly clear, though. Your suggestion is that the municipality. Advises every business owner not be collective, so individually. Business owners rather than a collectivity of business owners that would then circulate among themselves. I, I just want to be clear of your apps.
Um, like I said, I don't, I'm not in a position to how that would look, but like I said, even an email sent all of us. And then whether the businesses choose to read that email or partake or whatever, just something. Keeping us in the loop because like I said, yeah, like we. For the record, thank you, Will, that I, but I made that butter chicken in the dark with a headlamp with my generator. Like, and of course I did, I did it because I wanted to. But um, yeah, just it's communication. I think, and asking for communication.
Well, if I may, um, yeah, I appreciate the uh, the request. I I appreciate, you know, your position on that. And I'm not here to to debate the the relevance of it. I have my own experience, which uh, you know, I I'm not going to debate with you here. Um, and you know, I'm sure other people have their own experiences as well. If you have nothing further to add, again, I thank you very much uh, for coming forward and thank you for admitting a very wholesome and uh, informative conversation. So uh, I think we learned a lot. Uh, not just from, you know, our experience through the forest fire and power, but the more information session here today, so.
Okay, thank you very much for listening and I hope, I hope I'm being front of it. Thank you.
Ms. Kogel, would you like to come forward?
I will and I will be this. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, my name's Shelley Kogel. I'm Gabriel Investments. I have three businesses in town. Uh, the Queen's Laundry, Snow, which is sixty years. Snow Room Coffee Bar, eighteen years, and then Drawmona, which is a year this year. So we're very familiar with the ups and lows of business and community. Um, I have a lot in common with Lynn who just presented. I do feel the community, I am on par with her about communication with the business community. As we said, the chamber was unable to communicate with the members at that time. So having a central body that is able to do that would be a great resource for all schools and communities. Um, while we may be individuals and residents, we also have members of our teams who maybe in management roles or people may be away. So having um showing the respect to the business community by communicating with them directly would be appreciated in time of crisis. But my point today is, uh, we are recovering now, we're in a recovery stage, I think, from the shutdown. Our business was closed ten days, uh, which is, this is our most important time of year, as Lynn stated as well. We are now looking at solutions. My head, I'm thinking, what are some solutions? And I'm hoping that someone from the municipality can maybe communicate with the business communities, find some really quick, efficient solutions. And to me, when I come downtown in the morning, I see quite a few empty parking spots. Some days the parking is full, some days there's, the other day I took a picture across the street, totally empty at two o'clock in the afternoon. So uh, to me, a simple solution, which may not be simple on your end, but as a downtown business person, is to bring people back to the downtown. Let's invite them back. Let them know that Jasper is open and revert from our paid parking back to a two-hour parking system, change for people to come and spend some time downtown. That's a, I realize the program is ending soon, but I think this would be a simple solution to show some support to the business community and um, allow people to come downtown.
I really appreciate that. Thank you for uh, coming forward and uh, I know it's not easy sometimes, but um, you know, I, I appreciate that being part of the solution a lot of the times. Uh, you know, we've had members in the community, you know, like I say, I'm not just here to complain because, you know, if you have a complaint, you should have a solution. Um, right with you and I think that should be something to consider. Personally, I don't know how the rest of council feels. Is anybody you'd like to speak to that?
Counselor Wilson. Thank you, Shelley, for coming in and I really appreciate you having ideas and and sharing them with us. Um, it's a great gesture, very nice gesture. Um, I'm not sure how effective of a V I did, so so I'm just running through like the potent con of it. Um, my uh, reservations are, um, we're in our first real year of paid parking. I think we're gathering a lot of information currently and we're running pretty close to the end, but again, there's another month ahead of us and um, my reservation would be to cancel paid parking during Dark Sky. Um, it's a, it's a revenue generator, not just for tourism, but also the municipality if we are continuing, well, if ever continuing paid parking. Um, I personally would like to have a complete year of parking to say, okay, this, these were the revenues of from this date to this date. Um, I also agree with you, this is a great idea. Let's encourage people to come. Uh, will it bring people into town that have not already booked? I don't know. Uh, and how do we get the message out there? Um, you know, an Anatolian coming uh, to Jasper, I I don't figure it's going to make a, make a break their uh, travel plans. Um, and can we get it into the media? I'm not sure. But anyway, I I, great idea. I would definitely support it going to uh, like Trump community, the whole recommended go to uh, regular council this afternoon, uh, to vote and honestly, uh, yeah, give me a little bit more time to think about it and that uh, what what could be, that's uh, thank you.
Well, Counselor Wilson, that like, we think I had some ideas and I didn't want to get into baiting on it here, but this afternoon might be a really good uh, platform to do that. So if somebody likes the idea, would like to recommend that committee board that to council for discussion. I think it might be worthwhile, um, you know, as a solution. When you think about Dark Sky, that's still a few weeks away and, you know, the the message for a while that that might have been out there is that, you know, Jasper might not, it might not be the best time. That could still be out there. I don't know. I'm I'm not involved in marketing. I know that tourism Jasper's been working uh, really hard to to get people back here, but that could be something that, you know, hey, we're going to do free parking for the rest of that, that free park might help uh, stir up some business. So it's definitely something to contemplate. Um, again, if somebody has emotion and wants to have that discussion there, I think it's a good idea. Counselor Keller, if you want to speak. Sure.
So I understand we too, as businesses, have plans. Like we plan our year, we plan what's going to happen, what our outlook is, what we expect our revenue to be. Much the same as your June, fine parking, paper. Our plan is severely disrupted. So to say you want to stick to a plan um, after a disaster is um, saying that my plan but disregard mine. And so I'm not too sure sticking to paid parking, just thinking about a plan, you want something to go when you're in a state of this is disaster recovery, um, that that's a valid argument.
Yes, this is one too. Like like you said, uh, well, our plan already has been disrupted, but you know, we had those same ten days, you know, uh, of lost revenues. Um, so maybe it's not going to be a super accurate uh, year anyway. Um, and we can, I guess, forecast or, you know, approximate how much we could have made since after October. And so, yeah, definitely, uh,
And that's where we're at.
Yeah.
As I said, uh, there's a lot of things I'd like to debate on this, but I I think we should just get to the information here and we can get into debate on the validity of of having free parking and plans to uh, to proper venue. I have Counselor Keller, I have the Council now.
Thank you, Ms. Kogel. We also, and Ms. Monik, um, I, a lot of interesting discussions, there are a lot of information. I like your idea. I think um, people like me, I think, you know, might be worth trying it. And I agree, I'm downtown a lot, going back and forth, J C Center. And I come down and the streets are empty half the time. And I think it'd be great to encourage people to go back downtown.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor Keller. I have the Counselor.
Um, unfortunately, I'll speak in the opposite. Um, people are here anyway. Our marketing dollars are precious. They're small. Tourism Jasper, the chamber, um, have limited resources. And we need to get the message out to get to Jasper. I think when you take a message of we're open and we're ready to welcome you back and then throw in, try to throw in something that parking is free, we miss the point of what we're trying to do. We're trying to encourage people to come back to Jasper. Think about Jasper, not this weekend, not next weekend, not just Dark Sky. Christmas in November, through the whole winter season. It it's really hard when you, when you try to reestablish yourself after you've had an event like we've had. To fragment the message with free parking on top of welcoming people back. I, and that's my personal opinion. I've been marketing Jasper for about thirty years in my hotel role. And um, I'm not an expert at it by any means. That's just my opinion as a counselor and and I think we need to, you know, welcome people here. Get them here and give them the best experience we can. I don't know how much they're going to care about a two dollar per hour parking fee, quite honestly.
Um, in regards to that, on the second day, we opened, we opened on uh, Wednesday. And on the Thursday, we were um, we opened our business very slowly because of the susceptibility of our equipment, especially in Queen's Laundry, too poor power. Our power supplies uh, were not happy. They're beating a lot. So we opened, my husband and I, we opened up that business ourselves. We still have some stuff to fairly load. I think that that's a full other conversation. Um, and we had a customer come in, he parked downtown in his campground. He came, he did laundry. He went to the grocery store, he uh, went to Patricia Street daily and he visited our um, this is a this is um, a night. I'm getting you this look into my life and how I deal with people, not as a criticism of anybody, they or our dialogue. The fellow was late, reestablishing his paid parking. So not only had he spent probably sixty to a hundred dollars in the community, by the time he left, came back, he had sixty-five dollars. Um, the street was not full at that time. It was very empty. It was a tough conversation for me to have with somebody about why they come to our community. So then maybe we need to look at other things. If you think that you don't want to deal with parking or switch to an early um, two-hour parking limit, then maybe we need to discuss how we're treating our visitors when you're after this. I, and I'm not defending him not paying for his ticket, like that, uh, for paying for his parking or being late for his parking. But that is what I do with all work. I also spend a lot of time holding phones up to a reader. Um, not everyone's phone works. So the the positive issues that we're trying to bring to our community of being open and being welcoming are sometimes offset by things that are unintentional. And these are unintentional, um,
repercussions.
Feelings and situations that people are getting themselves into that make them not want to be in this downtown community. And that's been, that's just the last week, not the full summer. So if you, if anyone wants to talk with me about what we experience day to day with downtown parking, I'm more than willing to tell them.
Thank you, Ms. Kogel. Uh, you wish to be with us, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. There was a suggestion of committee recommendation that council deal with this at our regular meeting at one thirty this afternoon. But I was struck by one of your comments during the presentation and that is that seemed like an easy solution from your perspective, but then you looked at administration and I think that's that's absolutely appropriate. And so I would like to hear from administration about unintended complexities of of ending this pilot project early. Um, and I'm not sure that administration is in a position to be able to respond this afternoon. Um, I would be supportive of dealing with the matter uh, early because I understand your position, but I, I don't want to unnecessarily burden administration to try and give us um wholesome or even a cursory um, explanation of the challenges that they will face trying to end the program. I mean, I the sign will still be up there, will have people frustrated because they they can't make it work perhaps. I I just don't know what the technical requirements would be to immediately end a program that I think is slated in within a month in any event. So um, I leave that for administration to to give me some guidance on that, but would otherwise be supportive of of a motion here um to have council look at it this afternoon. I was struck also by your comments about intended and unintended consequences and linking that to intended and unintended um statements. And so I appreciate that your intent is to have council make a, a statement in support of business. But is that statement then equally, perhaps unintentionally or maybe intentionally, a statement that paid parking by itself is harmful to business? Because if if you're saying, well, the only way to get business back is to stop paid parking, or at least that's one way, then that suggests that that would always be the case. And I I find it very challenging for council, um, having launched this, this program, um, to say that paid parking in and of itself is a detriment to business, but I think that's the unintended statement by by terminating um the pilot projector. So I, I mean, and if it is, that's, that's what we have to face, but is that the intent of our statement or can we restrict it just to temporary support for business?
Um, I'm asking for temporary support and I, what I really appreciated when we were at the beginning of council call stating, what is it that you want to hear from us? And sometimes as a business community, we just want to hear some support. Um, we also, I understand the parking situation and that in the summer, we have a million tourists here, but they're not here right now. And that's the difference. So you're, the paid parking program, when we have our twenty-five thousand visitors a day here, is probably what the, I understand why you want it to go ahead for revenue, but right now we don't have twenty-five thousand visitors here a day. So that they are similar but separate. So that's my response.
I I appreciate that. It was a clear response and I, I recognize the the difference between a statement um intended to support business and one perhaps unintentionally um, intended to undermine um, a program that that we're seeking to get further information on. Thank you. That's, that was very clear.
Great. Um, again, healthy discussion and I appreciate um the level that we're speaking at and I'm not sure if anybody has a motion to have discussions this afternoon. And even then, if if we contemplate it over lunch hour or whatever break we get or regular meeting, that's not preventing the discussion to happen at the regular meeting, even if it's not directed by committee. Counselor Relic, you had a comment last night?
Uh, well, just one of, two things, a point of clarification. This is not a pilot project. And I, it wasn't a point of order, but to be clear, this is a a project, it is a, an endeavor by the community to actually charge for parking. The second thing is we talk about the business community. Um, is the chamber behind your, 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 your um, suggestion? We recognize that there are a variety of businesses. And the chamber is representative of a number of businesses in the community. So when we listen to individuals and individuals um, or organizations, the chamber generally speaks for the business community. Um, so we, we, we have to balance who is speaking for the business community. And and I leave it at that in And, and I leave it at that in that um, we have relationships with the chamber, we have relationships with Tourism Jasper, with a variety of other partners. And speaking for the business community, um you may be speaking for your own business, but I don't know if you're speaking for the community at large. And I, and I throw that out there because um, there is an organization that is dedicated to speak for the business community.
I am very much an advocate for my business. I wrote that letter with my letter pad and my names. And it is coming from myself. I'm not here seeking for any other organization or other any business. I'm engaging as a business owner with that.
That's good. And um, I appreciate um the comments made and like I said, we can have debates on the validity of paid parking and so um I've always been a supporter of having paid parking during peak periods when there's uh high demand on limited space. And there are valid arguments on either side on whether we should proceed or not proceed and um impacts on different businesses and um, you know, that's a very good point on, on overall representation. Because a business uh had um lights that were provided by the municipality in front of the street that were affecting their personal business and not everybody else's. And said, we should shut off all downtown lights. You know, we can't do that as a blanket call because somebody came and said that to us. So I'm using that as a, as a really ridiculous comment, but I understand how parking affects uh businesses and uh on, on both sides. So I think that the idea is a good idea to talk about, to debate, because we've learned a lot of things just in this discussion right now. And um, I think that there's some validity to it, uh, but I've also, you know, I don't want to put the municipality over other businesses in the community. Just because we had a plan doesn't mean that, you know, they didn't have plans either. I know that at one point um, from what I had forecasted with my business and the rate, the way we started writing, I thought September was going to be amazing. So I started to adjust my business plan on, you know, what my bank account and expenses and payroll were going to look like because we had to make an adjustment. And then the fire hit. And then all of a sudden say, oh, all this gravy that I thought it was going to have at the end, or, you know, this progress and this momentum we have floor was dropped out and we're still trying to recover from it. So now like our personal plans have changed. And I think as a municipality, yes, we're going to adjust because the revenue is significantly increased. But, you know, I think that with the professionals that we have, we could make some calculations on what we could have made in September and October if we didn't have paid parking. So to me is if we're not going to get the overall demand back, uh, you know, that high impact on the community, we're going to have open spaces. To me, it doesn't make sense to have paid parking for the time that, you know, maybe it should be a little bit more open. Granted, the mayor had a really good argument on the message. I get that. Uh, so there's a lot of things to, to contemplate and there's really good opinions on both sides. So I would like to hash it out if uh, you know, uh, on a proper venue, if, if that's what council wants. Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I, I would, would be willing to take motion to, but prior to that, I'd just like to this is one way to attract visitors back into the community. Um, are we, administration, are we working on anything else to um bring people back? Get the message that we are open to still, uh, you know, all amazing time to be here.
Deputy Mayor Demota, um, certainly we leave the marketing of Jasper to our colleagues at Tourism Jasper. Um, but I can say that from an administrative perspective, Mr. Reed and his department are working with Tourism Jasper to help support the Dark Sky Festival. Uh, that we, I think either request or if it's within administrative authority, uh, just decision to support waiver fees to be able to support that event. So I think that there's a material contribution of municipality uh in terms of supporting events. And it's actually the events, I think, that, that attract visitors. And so we're doing something that's within council policy. Uh, administration's looking at that request from Tourism Jasper. It's likely that we'll find a way to support that. So I think there's that direct support for events. While we do leave for marketing of those events, the marketing of our community to our colleagues, so Tourism Jasper.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Um, if no more counts, if any other counselor has anything to say, please say it. And then I will refer back to be grabbing closing comments. Go ahead, Council.
Well, I'd be willing to make the motion that uh we recommend that committee direct counsel to discuss uh any paid parking for um with twenty twenty two season.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Does everybody understand the motion? Administration, Mr. Given, it's clear to what the request is?
Deputy Mayor Demota, it's a recommendation to council. And so as long as you all understand what you're asking yourself to discuss this afternoon.
All right. Councilwoman.
A, and clearly it's just to further the conversation for, for this afternoon. That's uh my motion.
All right. I, I guess when we get that, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Just to, to speak to the motion, um typically, um, council would have the benefit of a recommendation from administration and would consider a motion. And so I go back to my earlier question, is there any expectation that there might be a recommendation from administration by this afternoon with respect to um, the complexities or lack thereof of an early termination or cessation of paid parking for the year. And as I said earlier, I'm quite prepared to deal with the question. But I would like to know whether administration is in any position to offer us the benefit of a recommendation prior to making the decision.
And those are good comments because if you think about having the old cover signs or takedown signs, cocaine kiosks and all things like that, uh, it might be some undertaking and that's just, you know, shutting it down doesn't mean that phones aren't going to stand anymore and we have to somehow communicate that it's not if we decide to go in that direction. So there are a lot of complexities. It was, once the machine is, is turning, it's sometimes it's hard to turn off. So uh, very good comments. Um does anybody have anything to add to the motion? Would like to speak to it? Okay. Councilwoman.
Well, I, I support Mayor Allen's request for information. So, but I would, I would retract my motion if you would have a alternate motion that would request more information from administration.
I am not seeking an alternate motion. I just want an answer from administration. Is there any possibility that they could have a recommendation for us by this afternoon? Sorry.
Mr. Given.
Sure. Thanks, Counselor Demota. Uh, I think administration um could find some additional information. I wouldn't expect it to be at a great level of detail by this afternoon, considering the questions from up this morning. Um, and uh, I can say that from, uh, from a high level, uh, you, yourself, Counselor Demota, identified one of the challenges. There would be labor costs associated or, or disruption in our sort of fall startup plan. I know the operations team is currently in the middle of transitioning and being ready for fall. And so we would have to divert some staff to either taking down signs or covering signs. Um, if we were, wouldn't bother to cover, cover them, I wouldn't think. I think we'd take them down since it's likely to be down for the season. Um, and so I don't have an estimate on how long it would take. I know the installation of the signs took a couple of weeks. Um, but removal might be slightly faster. Uh, so there will be some work that's underway that we would have to defer to redirect staff to take down those signs. Um, and the reason that we would need to take down the signs rather than just discontinue the problem the program is because I think of the, the challenge uh that we've all experienced this, uh, Shelley sort of identified. Uh, customer frustration and friction is one of the biggest concerns, I think, that everybody's had for the program. Leaving signs up when the program isn't active, I would suggest would, would cause a greater challenge for visitors um than, uh, and so really it would be about communication and finding a way to either get the signs down as soon as possible, um diverting staff from other tasks to do that, which I would suggest would be a matter of at least a couple of days work to do that. Um, and ensuring that in, you know, and, and so the program couldn't end this afternoon, for example. Um, the other piece of information, I think, that, that I do have at hand now that will be helpful for council is just in terms of uh, the number of parking instances that we can see. Um so far this morning, there have been sixty four payments at tap signs. Yesterday, there were five hundred and sixty eight and the day before that on Sunday, there are six hundred and thirty three. So that's just a quick cursory scan that shows that in the last two days, over eleven hundred people have used the tap system and been paying. Um, and so I think that that's important context for council when you're considering that. So beyond those high level notes, um it will take staff time to remove the signs. Administration would recommend that the signs should be down before the program ends to reduce customer frustration. Um, administration might be able to put together a bit of an idea of how long it would take to take down the signs. I think that's about the only additional information that would be able to give you. So far currently using the system, administration would recommend that if council wished to discontinue the system uh, or to end the program early this year, that that end should not happen until assigned or removed so that we don't further frustrate visitors. Um I think the other question, and this is really what council's been struggling with, and it, we were writing it in the report, who would comment on this, is whether uh there's an ability to change somebody's mind about coming to Jasper over the cost of free parking and how uh, we would communicate that to them. That's certainly a, that, that is a subjective question. But certainly if administration was giving you an RFD in a report, it would have, uh, would identify that as a challenge. And I think from our tools, I don't think we have the ability to inform a visitor that is or isn't on the way from Vancouver or Toronto uh, about whether or not there is paid parking in Jasper. Um, and I don't know how effect, I, I can say from an administration perspective, we wouldn't see that as being particularly effective. So, your worship, I think that that's about the level of information that you could expect from administration. Um we have data about the number of people that are using it, which I've shared with you. Uh, of the only other data that we'd be good for you would be an estimate of the time to take down signs.
Well, I appreciate that information and uh not having specific recommendations. There's, that's good information to have to have discussion. So there's a motion on the floor still to move this discussion to the regular meeting. And uh, I don't think we're in a position to add an agenda item to the regular agenda, but um, I guess when we get to the end of that meeting, then we we'll move that forward. Okay, so on paper. Okay, and close that one's carried. Thank you for uh, again, I think maybe some new conversation here today.
Thank you, um. Councilmore, Deputy Mayor's more. And I, and thank you, council, for listening to two small businesses today. I know we've heard lots of chocolate tourism Jasper and Chamber of Commerce, but what it comes down to is there are individual small businesses behind these groups that don't always um have the same ideas. So um, I appreciate the time today and uh look forward to hearing the outcome this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You are, you are of course welcome that this afternoon. Here to be out from the person.
All right. Uh, and not to put uh any conversations to more delay, uh, I think before we go forward that uh it would be good to take a comfort break of some sort before we move on. We could have some lengthy discussions. I'm, I'm really all dressed in this tube and uh really patient to this. So uh, I would advise back at eleven o'clock. Um, that gives us uh six minutes, five after eleven oh five. That gives a few minutes for breaking. And did I get the time right this time? Okay.
Eleven oh five.
Eleven oh five, we'll be back. Thank you. All right. So we took a lot of time uh going through uh this morning. So we're going to speed things up really quickly here this afternoon so we can have a lunch break. Like to welcome everyone back. Uh, it is uh now eleven oh nine and uh we're getting back to the agenda. Like to call us back to order. Uh, our first item of business is uh under new business, seven point one, the Jasper Transportation Strategy and Action Plan. I'll defer to you, Mr. Given, before we start. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demota. Just a very brief introduction. As council is aware, uh, administration had issued, uh, received a grant for a transit planning study. Um, and council approved the award of the uh transportation system feasibility study, a team uh assembled by WSP. Um, Erin is the lead of that team and on behalf of WSP, and she's going to uh, share some of their initial findings, uh, give council an update about the project itself. Um, and the approach that they're going to be taking. Um, and so show this really is the nature of an update report to councils that you can be aware of the progress that's being made on this accepts that administration and the budget's going to take. So I'm going to hand it over to Erin, who has a presentation to share as part of your agenda package and was on screen for our viewing public.
Hey, thanks, Bill, and thanks Deputy Mayor and Council. I'll be quick, happy to answer any questions afterwards. Um, so again, this is a, an update on our Jasper Transportation Strategy and Action Plan project. I would like to acknowledge the other members of the team that we pulled together. They're some of my favorite transportation planning colleagues. So we have leading mobility, Berlin Communications and Anderson Business Holding as part of the the consulting team on this project. Our agenda is just to review kind of our project process and timing and then what we've done so far and give you a heads up about where we're going next in the project. The project process slide shows you that we have just completed the research and contact setting phase of the project. Uh, there's a bit of an error on the slide. The project was initiated in August twenty twenty two, not May. Um, so we're looking to, to move into the rest of the process next, wrapping up um by the end of the year. Within the research and contact setting phase, we, we understood several different tasks that you'll see listed on the slide. And I'll review some of those tasks in, in the rest of the slide deck today. Um, when, I'll touch on the, the Jasper bus pilot from last summer toward the end of the the end of the presentation, but happy to answer some questions on that as well. To start, we understand Jasper's goals for public transportation are to reduce vehicle congestion and mainly keeping vehicle traffic and especially heavier camper type vehicles out of the town site um and out of the parking lots at, at nearby popular amenities. Prioritizing environmental sustainability, improving the quality of life and transportation options for residents and improving the quality of experience for visitors. These goals are numbered, but they're not intended to be ranked in any way. Um, so we also, we know that the tourism context in Jasper is, is a very important um lens from which to look at these goals. Looking at Jasper's residents, we know that there are just under five thousand residents in Jasper per the latest census data that we have. Um, and we looked at some of the demographics of residents that are typically uh more important public transportation customers or demographics that have limited access to private automobiles just to understand what some of the um, the target populations, the target public transportation markets may be in the community. We know about the visitor population that there are over a million visitors in Jasper per year. In summer, June through August, we see an average of about four hundred and fifty thousand visitors per month with slightly less in, in the shoulders of spring and fall and considerably less in the winter with about a hundred and fifty thousand visitors per month. Um, Jasper has several different private transportation tour companies that provide service for tourists. Um, but we still see that tourists tend to have uh reliance on car rentals, camper rentals and uh tour bus companies. We have already been working with tourism Jasper and they provided us with a really rich data set that they use. It's um cellphone data that kind of tracks cellphone pings at different destinations across Jasper and they've got a lot of different levels of geocoding associated with that data set. So we looked at um, one of the more granular levels to understand just what are the top destinations in both the summer and the winter. So this slide shows kind of our destination rank. It's sorted by most popular destinations in the summertime. It also shows the, the rank of those destinations in the winter. Unsurprisingly, downtown Jasper is, is the most popular, has the most activity, both summer and winter. Um, something that was a little surprising to me was that pyramid of the official lakes range so high in the list. And so this data, we know it's not perfect. It's, it's cellphone data. Not everyone has a cellphone. Certain countries have different cellphone permissions, so we have to take this as a piece of information, but not, not the full picture. And we're looking to kind of round out our understanding. as a piece of information, but not not the full picture. And we're looking to kind of round out our understanding of of destinations with Parks Canada's capacity, information about different um destinations in the park nearby the townsite. But this is just a really interesting data that that was shared earlier in the project. Next, we we've compiled an understanding of Jasper's current transportation providers and we're we're working on enhancing this understanding and happy to take any feedback that council has on this today. Um we, our goal is to engage with these transportation providers next and really understand the services that they're operating within the community and the intent of this study is not to be stepping on any toes. So trying to understand understand the businesses that currently exist within the community and look at integration potential, partnership potential, but not um use of any business that currently exists. In addition to the transportation providers, we're also, we know there are other key stakeholders in the community. Um Parks Canada Tourism Jasper, the Chamber of Commerce, for example, and then some of the other rail transportation modes that bring guests in and out of the community and of course the accommodations um accommodation businesses in the community. So again, engagement with these key stakeholders is is a key next step in the process to to understand, help us inform our understanding and then as well help us kind of brainstorm about where we go next strategy. When it comes to public transportation, we're not focused just on what bus transportation as as is often kind of what comes to mind when we say public transportation, we're taking a captain, a really wide net um of different transportation modes. So M A A S lifted at the top of the slide, that is an acronym for Mobility as a Service. And that would be an option that essentially helps to integrate several transportation modes, um typically integrating on demand transportation modes. So that's that's something we're considering as well as these discrete different modes shown in each different box. There they exist on a spectrum. Some are typically entirely publicly owned, which would mean sort of a heavy level of investment for the public sector. Um and they range to entirely privately owned. And so this is kind of one way that we're starting to think about these modes. We've done a preliminary analysis of the applicability of each of these modes of transportation to Jasper and found that there's none worth ruling out at this stage, except for that Bill did give us the good direction to rule out gondolas. We had that in it early. Uh it was a bit cheeky, but we just wanted wanted a mode to to rule out. Um so I think just on the entirely private side of the spectrum, I think any of these modes could and may show up in the strategy and action plan, ranging from things that the municipality may fund um potentially operate to say enable or assist with marketing. So there could be kind of, you know, quite varying levels of effort with any of these solutions. We've also done a jurisdictional review, and so we reviewed other municipalities based on similar context to Jasper. Any interesting or innovative mobility options that we know or understood that they were implementing? And whether they had potentially fixed or on demand transit systems that were part of their broader mobility system. So some of the key takeaways from our jurisdictional scan were that there is risk in a ride sharing partnership model. And so a ride sharing partnership model would be where a municipality might subsidize taxi rides or in instances, it's been applied to Uber partnerships where a municipality would subsidize Uber rides. Um there's risk that ridership growth can be financially unsustainable because there's a commitment to subsidizing, you know, a continually growing number of rides. On the other hand, this is an option that could be considered as it doesn't require a lot of public investment to start up a system like that. So we're kind of holding those two two things in balance as we evaluate the potential of a a ride sharing um partnership. Bike sharing is is growing in popularity in tourist and mountain resort destinations, and we've seen its application in places like Whistler, Aspen and Park City. Um tourist destinations tend to offer multiple public or shared transportation modes. So um a good example is kind of bike sharing as a complement to to fixed route bus service. Um considering options that carries even bikes given our our mountain destination. And then there there was a bit of a interesting objective in Whistler where the municipality was considering raising their parking fees to to raise funds for transit. So I know this was just a discussion that council had, but it's something that Whistler is considering considering as part of their like look forward and how to um generate revenue to support other sustainable transportation modes. Um there's also a note that we took away on coordinating with nearby towns or nearby destinations um to provide interfaces between kind of a local system and a regional system or just understanding, you know, where regionally people might might want to go from Jasper or to Jasper. Um I'll just note that the scope of our study is to focus locally, but we'll obviously make some notes on any kind of regional opportunities that we see along the way. So for funding, we've outlined some preliminary revenue streams that the municipality could look at for public transit or public transportation services. So looking at kind of the obvious fair revenue user fees, um there's also the opportunity to have chartering services specifically for meeting both buses um and then advertising. So any kind of advertising, um the bike share system or on the side of a bus is an opportunity to gen- generate revenue. There's also a lot of grant funding available right now and uh specifically a bent toward electrification of public transportation systems. So that's the thing that we will keep in mind through through this study, it really that would check the box of environmental sustainability and um is, I think, where the federal government will continue to invest over over the coming years. So wrapping up with um a kind of a summary of the opportunities and constraints that we found so far. We noted that the pilot project um indicates some demand for public bus transportation in Jasper. We looked at the a typical measure of success for a bus service is the number of passengers per hour that the bus is in service. So we we took a look at the data, noted that we were at about four and a half passengers per hour on average throughout the pilot project. Um for a fixed route service, you expect that ridership number to be a little higher. However, you we saw a really good growth trend the whole time that the pilot was in operation, and I think that speaks to potential for success. Typically, public transit pilots, you want to see active for two years to be able to to measure the success of it. So I think that was a really healthy start and um and an opportunity to to build on. We know we have colleagues at the Bow Valley Regional Transit Commission that have experience operating transit services within a Parks Canada jurisdiction, and we will leverage our connections to chat with them and understand their lessons learned. Um we know there's, we've already talked about funding. There's a seasonality component that is an opportunity in bringing um additional people to Jasper, additional public transportation customers. Um that can be a really great opportunity for revenue, and I think we see that in the Bow Valley transit system that that some of their visitors end up being uh a large portion of revenue. There's also a lot of great opportunities for partnerships with local transportation providers and potentially some of the government organizations like Parks Canada um in any public transportation system. As far as constraints go, there aren't any existing kind of truly public transportation services to leverage or integrate with yet. So looking to kind of build out um some of those that public suite of services. The tourism market is seasonal, so it will require different solutions across different seasons. What works in the summer will not necessarily work in the winter. Some of the key destinations change as as we've noted. Um there's, we need to understand the existing operator context and the different visitor interests. And then um we know that there are limitations on food storage in Jasper and just kind of limited states in Jasper. So that's that's something that we'll have to consider looking at any bus transportation options. Um we also know, and this is something we keep in mind when we're thinking about on demand transit, is it's a really cool and new opportunity, but there's a limitation in that it works best when people have access to smartphone technology. So that's just something that we'll have to be aware of and and kind of managing um and advising about how to make a truly accessible public transportation system in Jasper. So go where we're going next, um as I alluded to previously, is this stakeholder and public engagement space of the project. This will help us kind of confirm those existing potential partners and then also hear from the public about their priorities for public transportation, any transportation modes that they might prioritize over others, any kind of types of services that they might like to see. And then taking that engagement feedback, we'll look at developing um transportation options for Jasper and then assessing the public transportation options. And we'll be back to council um at the end of the project with a strategy and action plan to share. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was very informative. Clear and concise. Um although I could understand why Parks Canada would do a jet action, um I was sad to see that there was a new direction to remove um gondolas because we did get a presentation one time where that might have been possible. With the information provided here and uh any concerns that councillors might have, are there any questions or uh information you'd like, Council Wilson?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm really looking forward to uh uh the information that's coming to us and I'm yeah, really excited. But uh honestly, just a quick question on um not that I agree or disagree with them. I'd probably agree with them, but where did you get Jasper's goals? Uh maybe it was probably like the first or second slide. How did you kind of get that part?
This we got them in consultation with administration um and I'll let Bill.
Yeah, uh Deputy Mayor Demota or Council Wilson, these were really the goals that were identified in the RFP that WSP responded to. So uh and as you can see, they are fairly high level goals, uh but I think really in the line of the council's strategic priorities. Uh so they are intended to be high level, to be as broad as possible, rather than get down to very narrow solutions so that our consultant team had the broadest working space to deal with. Um but uh yeah, if council sees that there are any additional goals that weren't considered there or any of those goals that actually aren't relevant, uh that's part of the reason for the presentation. If there's something that's fundamental in the approach, that's sort of misaligned with uh council's direction, it would be good to hear it now. But the direct answer to your question is those were contained in the RFP that WSP responded to um and administration identified those as the as the broad goals.
Would you clarify that they aren't ranked? Appreciate that too. Council Wilson, your side with it? Okay, uh your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. If I may, I have a list of questions. And I think the sign of a good presentation is that it elicits all sorts of questions. And so I think it's a it's a really good presentation on the on the point that councillor Wilson just made about goals. My only comment would be that goal number four, not ranked. Um it it seems to me that it it ought to say improve the quality of experience and transportation options for for visitors. I mean, we're doing this to ease congestion, and that means options for visitors as much as for residents. My real question about that slide though is to have you, if you could, just tell me again how you arrived at that over one million seasonal visitors. Do you do you mean by that um one million in each season? Um and there being essentially two seasons, summer and winter, we typically we talk about visitation being somewhere over two million. So I just want to understand how this fits with um the the normal language that we use.
I will have to double check that, but I think what was invited is summer, over one million visitors in the in the summer.
Yeah. That's good for that. Um on the on the question of key destinations on that particular slide, can you tell me the difference between downtown Jasper and Jasper Town? What is identified there and what's the difference?
That's a great question. There there is some nuance to the data. Jasper Town would be the town site excluding downtown. So they they have kind of two different zones within the town site. One is focused on the downtown and then Jasper Town would be the remainder of the town. And I'll make a note to clarify that.
And in terms of transportation options, um taking the suggestion is that it might be possible to meet both or one or the other of a downtown option and a not downtown option. Is that why there is that why we get that distinction?
The distinction is, I think, more about how the data were organized by tourism Jasper and what admittedly, this is the geography that was meaningful from the tourism Jasper perspective. I think still useful for us to see that the the town site outside of downtown is still one of you know, the most popular areas and that probably includes a lot of resident um cell phone traffic as well. But were we looking at this strictly from a public transportation perspective? We might draw the the geographical boundaries a little differently, but still, I think, a good data set.
On that same slide, is it safe to assume that Icefield Parkway North references Whistler campground, Waltham campground and Valley of Five would all be encompassed in that?
Yes. And so we also have some more more nuanced information about the capacities of each of those campgrounds that will help us kind of understand volumes that um Highway sixteen east and Highway fifteen west, those are picked up that's kind of traffic incoming and outgoing on the highway. So those are two locations we likely will exclude because it I think it takes more food traffic.
Richard. Would you, would I, can I comment on that same slide? Because you're in this step. So be because you 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 spoke, uh you're speaking to it. I I just wanted to jump in there and uh have had a realization that this may just, this is just cell phone because the two things they're missing here is Malina and uh my uh hospital, which are visited, you know, but but just because it can't get uh the uh you don't have cell phone coverage up there.
Um sorry. Deputy Mayor Demota, I may just think too for council, um there is a scope uh as well. Um so as Erin referenced, uh inter municipal transportation is not a part of the scope of this study. Uh and so some of those more outlining destinations were also not a part of this with this. So I think you're right that tourism Jasper doesn't have cell phone data, where there's no cell phone coverage accurate. Um and the scope of this really is to look at the the uh relatively nearby regional area rather than inter municipal transit uh transportation or transit to further outline uh attractions.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. If I may continue, I think um you you're invited some feedback with respect to transportation providers. And so I would just make note that I believe there are still three operating taxi companies in town. In fairness, I don't think we should have a document on our on our website um that shows that singles out any particular one. Plus, there is, of course, um one pedal cab that operates in town, but there are a number of bicycle shops and they're identified elsewhere, but those are transportation providers, I think, and ought to be recognized. In addition, um there is now for the semi-public um Grand Yellowhead school bus that maybe could be leveraged, and there is an existing Evergreen seniors bus that could potentially also be leveraged. So just other options that are not identified. And and finally, and this would think be my my final comment, maybe not. Um for many years, um council received a repeated um application or proposal from an individual who's name I forget, but it was with respect to um basically a streetcar service running up and down. And and we did take a look at that. Um it it was not at that time deemed to be feasible, but um the proposal was to remove the the boulevard um on come on and have a train going from one end to the other um that could just pick up and one end to the other that could just pick up and unload passengers just about every block. And for the town itself, not for the broader area. Perhaps it's still an option. I don't I don't know, but it it was heavily promoted by by an individual for a number of I was right, that was my last comment. But thank you for the for the presentation.
Does anybody have any contribution they'd like to make or questions they'd like to ask? I'm clear myself. So I'd really like to thank you again this too. And thank you administration for working this into our discussions today. Do we have a motion to accept this transportation strategy and action plan as information? motion by councillor Calrden. That's Carrie. All right, we are getting close to the noon hour and our next regular meeting is at one thirty. I'm just trying to be cognizant about priorities on our agenda and I know that there are things that might have impact on our meeting this afternoon, so it's a matter of prioritizing right now in the case that we run out of time and need to take a break. So I will move forward with going to seven point two. And then, Mr. Given, if you have any recommendations on what you think should be looked up for priority in the case of running out of time, it might be needing some advice. Okay. Now I will defer to you on seven point two.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Demota. So a material issue confronted council with respect to the activity center renovation progress update and so discussion. Director Reed is going to lead the majority of this, but the the essence is that we committed keeping council on form of the progress. The detailed design has proceeded. We reached a point where we need some direction from council on exactly where the design should go or how much the budget should be. And as you look here from director Reed, those two things, something's got to give. And we're receiving council's direction on that. I'm going to hand it over to director Reed to handle the discussion. And there is a mission package. Get anyone here. Deputy Mayor Demota, can you hear me?
I can hear you quite well. Thank you for the information too.
More than welcome. Thank you Deputy Mayor and council for this opportunity. I will not read verbatim, however, I will summarize as we go. The three recommendations you have for you are that you receive the September twenty twenty two Activity Center renovation progress update for information. And that committee direct administration continue the design process with three new arena dressing change rooms. And that committee endorsed the design concept of non gendered change room in the aquatic center. The alternatives, of course, committee could recommend council increase the budget to match the five dressing rooms option at the arena. Or committee could direct administration continue with gender specific washrooms. Including, and I should be clear here, a provision for what we would call family chambers. But not the sort of modern age movement to gender neutral. So again, the background, back in twenty nineteen, we secured some funding. Since August of twenty twenty one, engaged a full team of consultants. And on February twenty second, twenty twenty two, committee provided direction on which design concept should be further developed. May third, council approved the expanded project scope and total project budget of approximately fourteen million dollars. In the discussion here, so following that approval, we then went to the next stage with our consultants of schematic designs to better articulate the options as presented and to get a more accurate cost estimate. So the schematic design finalized in late July twenty twenty two. With that, the next step being the completion of the class D cost estimate in mid-August. And this estimate came in, as I mentioned, roughly two million dollars higher. There are, of course, variety of reasons for that. You know, we can all look at supply chain as an example, but the the physical base that we have to work with is a real full strength. So a rigorous value engineering exercise was undertaken to realign the project within the approved budget without compromising the intent. And this is important. So not enough could be done within that value engineering to bring the full project. And so we provided this option for the small reduction of scope. Council's approval of the project scope included proposed expansion to the arena that would be home to five new dressing rooms. This would bring us to a full complement of eight fully renovated or brand new dressing rooms. The space required to appropriately address these two expanded areas, sorry, that would require us also to update the Zamboni Room and change the access to the ice surface from its current large bay door that you see on the west end to a new option on the north end. After a thorough review, it's been determined that reducing the arena expansion to three dressing rooms and eliminating the expansion of the Zamboni Room, the project is more adequately aligned with the fourteen million dollar project budget. In addition to that reduced scope, the project team has discussed converting male and female change rooms in the aquatic center to non gendered chambers. As opposed to a general renovation as previously planned, non gendered change rooms are a design concept that's been adopted by a large majority of the aquatic facilities. And is a marked step towards improved accessibility and inclusivity. In the attachments, you can see exactly what we're talking about here. So without, again, without going too far into the details. Just to summarize a bit, so you'll see that, just let me slide my screen, option one shows what we're proposing. Which is, we would add the addition in blue, which would only be three new change rooms. And we would renovate the existing dressing rooms on the south side. Option two, which is in essence what was originally approved by council. Which is that new full dressing room expansion requiring the update of the Zamboni Room and renovation to the existing dressing rooms. And that really is where that extra two million dollars would be required. The aquatic center is just shown here. What we had presented was renovation of both chambers as approved by council. And the addition of a universal accessible washer and change rooms, often called family chambers. But they would be fully accessible and universal. The option that we are presenting today is to convert that entire space into a most efficient use with a much larger, if not complete, gender neutral proposal. And I think I would stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I really appreciate that, Mayor. Your worship.
Just on a point of order, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate the report and perhaps I should have intervened earlier, but is it possible to have the diagrams on the screen so members of the public have some idea what we might be talking about? They're hearing words, blue and green, but there is nothing to relate that to. Appreciate that.
My apologies. Thank you. Your worship.
All right. All right. It looks like we have the appropriate diagram up on the screen.
Deputy Mayor Demota, maybe just for the purpose of the public. So I will run through these slides. So the first one you see here is the recommendation for administration and really just a space diagram. The blue space is what administration's proposing would be done that would add three new full size change rooms. And the green space there denotes that a whole renovation of the existing change rooms on that side of the building. We go to the next slide. This shows what was originally brought to council again, just a space diagram. And you can see that the blue is much larger, taking over the entire sort of left side of the arena there. There are some challenges with this as a result of complications of just the physical spaces there. And obviously see that the new ice making plant is going in and a portion of this. And so there are some real significant constraints. There are also some conflicts with actual utilities on that side that would have substantial cost to relocate those utilities. And so for those reasons, administrations recommending the first, which is actually a reduction, so but it's still the addition of three brand new change rooms and a full renovation. Then the next slide is, I think, the pedal slide, and then it takes us down to the aquatic centers. Mr. Reed highlighted, this is what was proposed to council the last time they saw this. And council approved a full renovation of both the men's and women's change rooms as well as the the improvement to universal accessible family change rooms. That's the green spot in the middle. And the next slide shows what administration on consideration is proposing, which is really essentially the an expansion of the approach of family change rooms or gender neutral, but family change rooms that can be used by all. And taking that rather than a bunch of different discrete sections, looking at the change spaces as a whole. So that's that's the illustration that Director Reed was speaking to and the options that are being proposed.
And and thank you, CEO Given, if I may just add, I apologize for my brevity. I was working on on the premise of getting us out of here. I I will mention, in addition to what CEO Given said. The known site conditions when we developed the proposal, the original proposal turned out to be not as as easy to work with. So the setbacks became quite restrictive. And it is important to recognize that that that's why we do what we're doing. We're in an iterative process, right? There isn't an on off switch for this kind of work. We iterate, we find more information, we go down the next path. So, yeah, anyway, that's where I'll stop.
I I do have a question just before we go to other questions. If it may through Mr. Given to Mr. Reed or both of you. That's not to say that option number two still isn't available. It's just costs us two million dollars more than exactly because of the workaround.
That that is correct. It is still an option we could pursue. What we have done is balance what we believe is an economic responsibility with a service level increase. And so six fully developed change rooms, modern change rooms in the arena is definitely a workable arena. It will be dramatically improved from what we have now. And there's economic efficiency there that allows us to say it gives the right balance from our point of view. If it needs council to
And just for the sake of asking, because I know it's probably already been done, but that we explored and our maxed out our capabilities on specific grants or other funding that might be available for project situations like this, where we didn't anticipate in-ground infrastructure being viewed or having to work around removing, changing that one projects to the province or the federal government have any subsidies available for projects that get in this situation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota and the rest of council. This again is a normal sort of design process. So as far as we are aware, there isn't, you know, a pocket of, oh, your project's going to cost more here at the emergency fund. So there isn't something specific as you've indicated. However, the team, we are always looking for other opportunities. And so should something become available, we would, of course, bring it forward to council. But no, there isn't typically an opportunity for you to say, our project's going to cost more. Can we change our requests?
And understanding from some exercise that the people were in last week. There's a different way that architects and developers interpret things. And I'm wondering if there's an ability down the road now to start with option one and expand into an option two when funds do become available, or is it kind of an either or scenario at this point? We're going to complete, I'm just referring to the arena right here with option one.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I can speak to that. This develop this option one that we're proposing would not preclude the addition of two more change rooms. Should the community see, the only caveat to that, of course, they will cost more later on. But that's the time value of money discussion more than is anything else. But yes, this design does not stop us from adding two more at some future time, should that opportunity arise.
Okay, so it wouldn't be an increase in monthly night. Then bouncing over to the aquatic center, then there's two options there. I'm assuming that the the general neutral changes the cost of fair amount more with change rooms within the change rooms. So but that's just my thought. I don't know. And if I'm wrong, which one costs more and what are we looking at? So is there, there isn't an increase in budget budget with the with either changes that we're looking at?
So we are not proposing an increase to the overall project budget. You are correct, councillor Wilson, that there is an incremental cost to go to this gender neutral option two. It turned out to be on the order of fifty thousand dollars. So very small incremental increases that we could adapt other parts of the project to accommodate that. And the reason we're presenting it here is that this in into Deputy Mayor Demota's question, this is the only time we really would have to capitalize on the fact that we are in that space, the whole space. And so this fifty to seventy thousand dollar change means we can do it this time. We, you know, ten years from now, we could be looking at some changes to trim or or refurbishment. But we're not going to be at a wholesale change of these change rooms for the foreseeable future. So yes, this, we are proposing to spend slightly more here in incremental increase. But it is within the project budget overall. And it is really, that's the opportunity that we would not have another year.
Thank you.
I appreciate the answer and use me a little bit like how else does the general neutral change room look like? So larger changes, but where are the showers? Like how do we all operate?
So at this time, we can't show you exactly what it looks like, but you know, looking to our east, Edmonton has done this several times. At Pasquin, there's a new outdoor pool in Edwhistle that has a form of gender neutral or family large changer. And the idea to think about that you've already mentioned is you would have separate lockable floor to ceiling, completely private changing spaces. And in the same way, you would have, some of those would have showers built into them. Some of the showers would be, and it is clear that we haven't settled on exactly what this looks like. So we may find that the best answer is to have a certain number of gendered spaces within this gender neutral option. One of the best results of this is that we do get a much, it is easy to see that we will have a much better flow through the whole system. How that exactly looks yet, we don't know. But in general, you would have a space that your family would go to, or you as an individual would go to, you would change. And you would have a locker in a common area. But that would not be a changing area. That would be a flow through common area. That's an easy way to describe. As we go to the next level of design is when you would actually see how that works.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. My question about option one in the arena. So we have five dress rooms now and we had three go to eight, but five would be left alone, correctly renovated or touched. The other seven would be more acceptable. So no, five is not the acceptable adjustment for changing area. The other seven would be more acceptable. So no, five is not the acceptable adjustment for changing area. The other. As they said, would all be renovated to be acceptable?
Deputy Mayor Demora through the council hall. To be very clear, what our original proposal was eight. Either renovated or brand new. So they would. There would be eight fully accessible and inclusive and useful change rooms. What we are discussing today is moving to six. There would be three renovated and three new. And. Within this renovation, there are other efficiencies that we find. For example, when a public skate is on. There will be a space to change into your skate for that. That wouldn't actually be one of the changes. So there will be some operational efficiencies found just by the fact that we're renovating all those other changes. But to be clear and summarize, we'd be going from a eight dressing room arena to a six dressing room arena. Is it? Have I answered that question, Counselor?
I think so. So would five just not be just storage or?
So you're you're naming the change room five. Okay, now I understand where you're going. So you're not talking about a fifth change room. You're talking about the one that is commonly known as change room five. Which if you look at the diagram, which is up on the screen right now, it's in the upper right corner and it's white. And so that. Space, which is kind of a multi-use room, which is a change room, would actually still be one of our flex spaces. So we wouldn't spend any really any money there. We'll upgrade what we need to upgrade. Wouldn't spend any money over there and that space then maintains the utility it has today. And so. But back in when we were talking about eight change rooms, that space was also still a utility space. It wasn't a designated of those eight. It was not numbered within those. And it is currently not numbered within the six we are preparing. So that is a flexible space that we would use for a variety of things. Tournaments, it might be the first aid room. For our kids, it might be an extra gender neutral space. It would be used as needed throughout each event.
Dressing room number five has always been the female dressing room. So my only. I I I'm concerned, but as long as the so we would go from essentially having five dressing rooms to having six. Six brand new or renovated. As long as there is space for females, males, non-gender to be comfortable. This is this seems good. My other question. So so option one, no increase in budget? In the arena?
Correct.
Option one in the aquatic center, which I think is kind of cool. Did you say we have $50,000 increase or whatever?
There's no increase to the project budget is really important. Again, with a project like this, you flex where the flexing is needed. So for the incremental increase. What we what I'm saying is we can accommodate that within the proposed project budget. So really, the question we're asking you on question two. On the aquatic center is whether or not council supports the philosophy of going to this more modern direction. Of having a gender neutral setup in general. Rather than trying to make three spaces that are. I will tell you are going to be operationally compromised. This is a better operational decision if the council has the appetite for that political decision. So the first decision is, do you want to spend too many dollars or reduce your scope? The second decision is, is this change of scope, which does not change the project budget regardless of it 5,000 or 50,000. That's just part of our project as we move through. Are you prepared for that philosophical change you are setting?
Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demora. Got threats. Also, no, it was in line. Thank you then through you to Mr. Reed. Is it? Underground utilities that prevents or. Suggests against the Zamboni room renovations and. Whether that's the case or not, what are the operational implications? With that change in scope?
Thank you, Your Worship. Deputy Mayor Demora through to your worship. So I'll go backwards. The operational implications. We currently are able to operate very well with this arena, and so that is maintained. The change to the the. Five new dressing rooms and entering the arena from the outside through the Zamboni room. Would be completely operationally acceptable. It would reduce the size of vehicles. But we also have other constraints anyway on the size of vehicles that we put on our slab. So. So we would be able to operate with both setups. We already operate this way, so we're quite comfortable with it this way. We understand how to operate this way, and that's partly why we're proposing. We believe that operationally this is a good option to accommodate the change in price as we get more clarity on the change in price. As far as the sort of underground utilities. Yes, they are closer than any drawing has shown up now that we've got real data. And so that does change the cost. And that's why it is included in part of the $2 million increase. If you wanted to keep the eight change rooms and the access through the Zamboni room, operationally it will work. It will cost more because those utilities are much closer. And so we would be relocating a bunch of utility lines. That do not need to be relocated for their own functionality, would only be relocated so that we could fit this different operation model. And that is why you see before you a sort of willingness to sacrifice two changers. That economically, that seems like a good balance from what we know on our sort of the professional lens that we put on. Does that answer the question?
I believe that perhaps. Just speaking for myself, but I was persuaded that. Changes to the Zamboni room. Would add. Operational efficiencies. This is regardless of of cost or or. Inadequate information, but council in the overall scope. Initially approved changes to the Zamboni room. And I understood that to be because it would be a better configuration overall to do that. So now that there's countering that, there is a cost implication that we know about. I'm not quite sure what that cost is. We were told it would be substantial to to move those utilities. If those are ACO utilities. There might never be a better time to ask ACO to move those utilities for us. And preserve whatever operational efficiencies we could get from an expansion to the Zamboni.
Thank you, Your Worship, and and through Deputy Mayor Demora to all of council. So the efficiencies are based largely on the fact that we go to eight dressing rooms. That is where our operational efficiencies would be found. The there are also places like or or sorry, assets like a dehumidifier that need to be located somewhere. And so, yes, those dressing room renovations then create the opportunity where those. Assets can be located. And so there's an efficiency there. And and the $2 million increase does include ACO's quote. As far as perhaps capitalizing on our our recent situation with ACO. That has not come to that has not been offered nor. In all of the discussions, it hasn't been been brought as, you know. Do this or else kind of a situation. So we asked, we always ask. But it has not been brought forward because those utilities do not need to change. So ACO's model is if we don't need to change it, we don't change it. If they do need to change it, they are more than willing to come to the table and have in the past.
Go ahead, Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Demora, I think I'll maybe just key in a little bit more on the operation of the Zamboni room itself. I think initially, very early on in the design process, the council may have heard this at one point. There was a thought the Zamboni room needed to be bigger to accommodate larger Zambonis. A bit of that kind of discussion, I think, as we've gone through and Director Reed and the team at the the arena have looked at it. There really isn't. That's not a driving factor that it might have been considered to be at one point early on. So there isn't a need for additional elbow room in the Zamboni room. I think one of the major drivers and Director Reed mentioned this, but you know, the real driver saying, well, we need the Zamboni room to change. If we're going to be driving all external traffic into the arena through there. Because we're going to block off the existing access. Because we have to put five changers in there. So you can kind of see how that goes. If we're not putting five changers in front of the existing access. The existing access will continue to work perfectly well for those times when we need to get an external vehicle into the arena. And so therefore, we don't need to change the Zamboni room because we're not trying to squeeze other vehicles. So there are a couple of different things there. One. You know, I think the operational need to expand was not as great as as originally thought. Secondly, we're not, you know, if council goes with three additional change rooms on that. West side, we're not blocking the access. And so we don't need to reconfigure the Zamboni room to allow other vehicles to come in on those times where that happens.
If I.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Of the. Roughly $2 million cost increase. Can you say what amount is attributable to the underground utilities?
Your worship, my memory is that the budget we allocated approximately $750,000 to relocate utilities. So it is it's a material amount. It's not the whole amount, as you can see, even if. A utility provider came to the table and said, we'll do that. You know what? We'll do that for free. Then we still have another 1.2 million dollars of additional costs. So it doesn't solve the problem by these.
I, if I may. I have a question. It's more on metrics and business modeling. Now, for the opportunity for attracting increased business and for the revenues. I'm understanding that the differences between option one and option two holistically are two dressing rooms, correct? So when we're looking at an eight dressing room. Plan over a six dressing room plan, what is our ability to attract? Increased business and what would changing that impact? So if we go up one way or or down the other, could? Is there a possibility and return on investment plan if we do go? To because that that $2 million might come back and if it's got a a good return on investment, then. You know, it's something that we're paying for for, you know, future gain. And if we're, like you said, if we're going to be digging things up now. You know, is there a cost associated with each, I guess? Is that a clear question, I guess?
Well, I'll I'll just say that no matter how many dressing rooms we have, there's only so much ice time. And because there's only one sheet of ice. So I think that that's the biggest constraint on on the type of, you know, volume of business that we could get. Director Reed, I think from an operational perspective, will have more information on this, but I think the of the. Implication, we'll still have the same number of tournaments and the same type of tournaments. It just means that. Not everybody always gets their same their own private dressing room. If you have a. Particularly for the smaller age groups where you may have four teams competing on the ice at the same time. There's going to be a little bit of dressing room sharing, which is what happens today. People are happy to come to Jasper for tournaments and they know that they have to share dressing rooms. They're going to have a much better experience under this option one than they're having today. I don't think having to adjust my dressing rooms will get us more teams coming to play because the amount of ice that we have is really low in effect on how many teams can come.
Well said, CEO Given. I could only add one little thing just to. The. We will be able to accommodate something like, as you know, given set the. Eight. So we had an 18 tournament. Everybody gets their own dressing room. That is, you know, high level service. And so when we have an 18 tournament with six people, six dressing rooms rather. We can accommodate the flexing that is needed because we have six. It will be still very high level of service. So there will be an increased interest in tournaments at our community. But the limiting factor is absolutely ice time. So a 12-team tournament with six dressing rooms sounds wonderful. But there's only 24 hours and every day. So. Anyway, that's the key factor.
Yeah, and I get that. And, you know, it's. We're trying to get in the mindset soon that we have a new budget to kind of look at and, you know, eventually try to approve before year ended. There are a lot of other things that are looming in the distance. You know, we're considering escape park. We're considering a lot of different upgrades in different areas, right? I don't know if anybody ever wants to talk about having a backup generator for our electric flush bathrooms in the downtown Coralwood. Our goals up, but that's something to consider, right? And maybe not break forward, but things to discuss. So we've got major projects, the decision to be. Moving forward in in a in a short time here before those budget discussions, but just to be cognizant to, you know, there's other things in the community. And and when we're looking at major purchases or expenses and changes. You know, those might have ramifications to what we can do going forward. So that's just me. And, you know, I don't want to influence the rest of council. That's what I'm thinking, Mr. Given.
Yeah, Councilor, I I maybe just really, that's where that's what administrations think most of all. And that's why the recommendation in the report did not add much. Administration, I'm feeling here different from council, focused on bringing this project to the community and to council within the approved budget. And that's why we're recommending changes. So so really is if council says that we should spend more money, then actually we'll take that direction. Administration's recommendation is that, you know, on balance, there are a lot of other priorities. And that the enhancement to ser to service that's offered by a reduced scope is still going to be very good. That's why we're bringing it forward. So we are on, I think, the same one.
I'm gonna I'm gonna go to Councilor Hall first and then Councilor Molly before I. You're being very patient. You know, it's for me, it's just it's frustrating because. I'm not saying it will happen, but if $2 million did become available, you know, through our discussions in November, December, we could have maybe put it towards. Enhancing the scope of this. And that's just the trouble of having it here too late.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. From a point of view, from someone who has played hockey, traveled to other arenas, played hockey, has kids in hockey. Keeping a dressing room for the weekend is an absolute bonus. It's never accepted. And. When I tell a manager of the team that, hey, you guys keep dressing for the day, they're relieved. It's not an expectation. My concern would be that with six dressing rooms, as long as, again, as a female who has played hockey with men. There is no risk of being walked in while I'm showering. I'm all for it with six dressing rooms. I think it's great.
Well said. Thank you. Councilor. Thank you Deputy Mayor Demora. And we have these two options on each. Side and I I'm looking at the recommendations and I want to make sure in my mind I've got this right, that the recommendations. Would be for option one for the arena. Which is the three dressing rooms. And kind of how, doing only a a small expansion. But for the aquatic center, it's option two. Okay, thank you. I just and we're not increasing the budget by the 1.9 at that point with option one and option two. Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any further questions? Do we have a motion to? Or do you have to motion to recommend to the next? What is it? Did you not have some next agenda?
Deputy Mayor Demora, so if council directs administration to change the scope, that's just direction of the administration. You know, do the project this way rather than this other way. If council chose to expand the scope or add money, then that's something that would need to be decided by council. But if it if committee is giving us direction to continue the design process along a certain path, and that's what the recommendations say. Then there's no need for this to go to council because it's not a it's not a money issue.
Thank you. I'm still on purpose. Okay. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora, through you, Mr. Given. A challenge with that. So this this will be a change in scope. And. Or at least it could be. It's either a change in scope or it's a change in budget. Council approves scope and budget. Would it not be appropriate for committee then to recommend council? Either change scope or change budget? Either change scope or change budget? And would it make a difference? If we were to do that later? I understand that it's, it's a direction, but it is a direction. That is contrary to an existing. Either motion, I think it's a motion by council, and so I, I struggled with whether committee. ought to direct the change of scope.
Sure, Deputy Mayor Demoda, for Mayor Ireland. So certainly if council wishes to send this, sorry, committee wishes to send this to council, you could certainly do so. And. In order to, for the project to move along at a good pace and meet what are fairly aggressive timelines. If every decision about scope and design had to receive council approval, then that could. Impact, I mean, we have a council meeting this afternoon, which is a bit of an unusual circumstance. So, you know, my inclination is say, go and send to council, sure, no problem. If council said that every time that administration came with a need for some guidance on the project. That didn't impact your group budget. That those types of decisions need to go to council, that that might become more challenging. Because we do have consultants that are essentially waiting on council direction, say, so what should we start drawing? And if every instance where we need that direction becomes a two-step process with a week in between. That can become more challenging. As happens today, we've got a council meeting, so if council decided that they won't set it, wouldn't that be a deal? But I think the central point is that only council can approve changes to the budget, committee cannot do that. Committee can give direction to the administration, and I think from our perspective, we saw this as. Design alternatives. They do have an impact in the overall scope. But really they're design alternatives, and so that's why administration basically.
I tend to side on. The mayor on this one, not because it's a design change, it's because it's a level of service change. Although it's, it's not impacting, we've already decided that we were going to change the level of service, but this is. These are different offerings. So this is kind of where I'm at, a little bit of a. It has to, but we do have the opportunity to have it. Discuss this afternoon, so either way, I, I understand what you're saying, at the same time. We're discussing services to the community and. The visitors. If anyone's got a motion then. Mayor.
I will make a motion that. Committee received the September 2022 Activity Center renovation progress update or information. And. That committee endorsed. The design concept of non-gendered change rooms in the aquatic center.
Okay, and the intent of that endorsement at the end was that we don't have to go to council.
That's right, I think that is a design concept, that it's appropriate for committee to do that. It doesn't change scope in a real sense, it does change design. I intentionally left out. The other one that's worded as design process, but I think it was beyond design process, it is. It is the scope of the project, as you say, service level, so I. I think that one requires different treatment, but those, the other two receiving the update for information and. endorsing a design concept, I think that's. For me, I'm comfortable that that is within committee's realm, I'm not so comfortable. About the other one, but if somebody else wants to make a motion on that, we can deal with it and I will vote as I vote, but. I'm prepared to vote right now on those, those two.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion? Does anyone want to speak to it? Did you have to close? All in favor? Not opposed, that's carried. Mayor.
I would encourage. Somebody to make a motion with respect to that middle point, but if. If no one wants to, I will make a separate motion on that.
You're sharing the meaning. Yeah, well, I'm waiting for some of the. Oh, I'm sorry, I would support your motion, Mayor, and I'd suggest that you know exactly where you want to send it, and so I would make that motion. So.
I, I would make the motion that. Committee recommend. To council for consideration at today's. Regular council meeting. That council direct administration to adjust. Scope of the project and to continue the design process with three new arena dressing rooms.
Thank you. When I got into that little daze there, I was caught up, I'm wishing the chair so that I can do that, but the mayor stepped up, so I appreciate that. Does everyone understand the motion, is it clear? Does anyone want to speak to it? All in favor? That's carried. All right, now I'm just going to lean on council here to get any perspective on what you want to do. Should we carry on with the utilities, or sorry, the finance and administration report? Break, so we would. And then continue, we would have a regular meeting at 1:30 and then continue on with the council, the committee and the whole afterwards, if that's. What we. We.
Deputy clarify what you just said?
Well, we're going to have to take a recess at one point, and if we don't finish our discussions from committee, we'll have to continue them at some point. So do we do that after the regular meeting today? Counsel, counsel.
I just have a question, can we start our regular council meeting later than 1:30?
So my understanding generally around the act is that you can start a council meeting later than when it was advertised, but you can start it earlier. So, I mean, essentially, if people show up and they're ready to come to the regular council meeting, 1:30, you say, hey, we're not starting for a little while yet, it's going to start later on. We couldn't surprise people by saying, oh, sorry, you missed it, we already did the council meeting. So I think starting later is typically within bounds. You know, there is an agenda here that we need to get through. And I think it's up to council direction. From an administrator perspective, the 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5 are really. Sorry, 7.3 and 7.4 really updates that you'll see the recommendations there to receive information. Council may have other direction or discussion on the front of those. Petra Canada, Yan has also received the recommendation, but it would be more specific. I think the municipal position on private home accommodations is one that is probably more of a time matter to that one. And so council may wish to deal with that, but in terms of the others. If council wanted to defer those either to the regular council meeting, be a part of that agenda. Or to a future committee, or we can, that's something up to the council to decide on.
Okay. Miss Acorn, what is it?
Just, just for your information. We would, it would work best to finish the committee meeting, so that recording would be put to the whole. When anyone comes to the regular meeting, it's the same link, nobody sets a minute or anything.
All right.
The link is the same, but we would need to finish the committee meeting, so the recording to be on YouTube.
That's good, and I appreciate that, I was just respecting the boundaries of the meeting and. Things that we need to accomplish today. Counselor.
Although we do go into in-camera, so there will be a break.
That's the difference for recording, but we can't put two recordings together.
Okay, so there'll be a break for the in-camera session, but it'll be one recording for both meetings.
Yeah, we won't be able to put it together and.
If I may, Deputy Mayor Demoda, council should run their meeting the way that they want to run it. It makes sense that you finish one meeting. And when that meeting is concluded, however long it takes, they start the next meeting.
I asked that just because we've done what I proposed in the past, and I just wanted to bounce it out. So what, that's a desire to go straight through, and that's what we'll confine to, and that's what we'll do. We'll go on to, does anybody need a break at this point? Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, it's now almost 12:30. I assume at some point we're going to take a break, staff needs lunch. Like some assessments. We're at a pause now, I think it's a good time to then come back and carry on, whatever amount of time they're prepared to give us to go and. I need, but now making appropriate time to. Break.
Okay, so. Half an hour? 12 o'clock or 12:15, be more than half an hour? Forty-five, 15 minutes, or we'll convene at 12:15? 1:15? 1:15? Thank you. All right, so the gap person mothers might not seem as long, but it was a well-earned break for us and I appreciate it. It is now 1:15 and I'd like to call the committee of the whole of September 27, 2022 back to order. I believe we left off at agenda item 7.2. Before we move forward, do we have a motion to extend past the allotted period of meeting? Counselor Malik?
I would be happy to make that motion that we extend past the four-hour limit for the committee of the whole.
Much appreciated, go in favor. And opposed? I thought to just oppose that for the sake of opposing, but that's not necessary. Now we have, we're at agenda item 7.3, Finance and Administration Director's Report. Mr. Reed, are we having someone zoom in? I will defer to. Ms. Acorn, and we have. Ms. Malachek. Available for us. I guess through Mr. Given to you. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. Thank you for accepting this report today, just to give a quick highlight of what is included. It goes over a lot of work that's being done by IT over the past few months. So this report is to include May 1st to August 31st, just to be clear. And the financial reports are to June 30th, to stick with quarterly reporting. So that's. Halfway through the year that you'll get the finance reports till. Otherwise, budget and planning, it's well on its way with major. Work being done on service profile reviews as well as party-based budgeting. There's been a lot of training on that as well as work being done. So as you can see under the staffing portion, there was a course facilitated for. The whole management team on priority-based budgeting as well as a workshop facilitated for the senior leadership team. And just to highlight a few other things that have been done as of late, utilities. July and August will be, will have been sent out now mid-September. And. APC Alberta Purchasing Connection has received now a request for proposal for assessment services, so that has been done already. And good news on more people are signing up for monthly pre-authorized payments for taxes at the beginning of 2023, so that's good. Quick overview also on paid parking, and I know that there's more discussions to be had around paid parking going forward. But a quick synopsis of what has occurred revenue-wise. You will see that at the end of August, we were sitting at 304, sorry. And that's a pre-GST amount, and also what has been removed is also the service fees. And under communication engagement, you'll see that. Utilities. Update is prepared and you'll see that next, at 75% of the year, we're also sitting at 75% of the projected revenue. So the formula has been working. And just to remind everybody of the upcoming public budget presentations that are scheduled for November 14th and 15th. And to stay tuned for more on that. In the next page following the report, you'll see the revenue and expenses at June 30th of this year. So well on our way in revenue and we are under in expenses to date. Things always change as time progresses and gets closer, closer to the year end, but at the moment, we're well on our way in a good position. And I've also included a capital expense report now also. Remember that things have changed a lot in the past few months, things are getting worked on over the summer. And what I will do for the next quarterly report. Is I will include a comment section so that all of the managers and directors can make comments on where they stand with their capital projects. So that you'll see that prior to going into the budget discussions for the next year. And that is all for a summary of my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Malachek. Does anybody have? Do any councils have any questions, their comments? I'm sure there's a few. Counsel Wilson.
Just out of interest, the paid parking numbers look excellent, we didn't really use that revenue, remember, but. Did? Did we have paid parking in September and October of last year? If we did. And maybe not, you wouldn't give the answer today, but. Would you have an across mid-number, like are they going to represent similar to May and June, or what would, do you have a? Comment on that?
Yes. I can bring up last year's number, I have the portal open actually. So in 2021. For September. Keep in mind, there was less area covered. So the parking lots were not included and less streets were included. But in September of 2021, there was $23,792 in top signs alone. So then there's also the side of. Using the app. And website, and in that, in September 2021, which is less usage. Was $1,999 on top of that amount. For October. Of 2021. We had $6,799. This is, sorry, and I'm also looking at all, all included, so that includes GST, but it does deduct the service fees. And then for. The actual use of apps and web, the website in October, nothing for 2021. But it is not comparable at this point because. Of the difference in. The variable in that we're using more area to park now.
I appreciate that, yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Your worship.
Your worship, Lord.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demoda, firstly, I wonder again, just as a. A point of order or at least convenience for any members of the public. If there are questions about the report and pages of the report, we can put it on the screen so. Any members of the public who are watching on the Zoom platform can follow, that would be preferable. I do have. A couple of questions. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The, the first question, um, Ms. Malincheck is just generally based on, on the first page of the report. It strikes me, um, that. Your job is. So much more than finance. Um, and I wonder whether. There has been any. Thought on your part. Of whether we ought to. Reverse, um, your title as Director of Administration and Finance. I think the community and maybe even council. Thinks that you deal with the budget and, and. Money issues, but there is so much more that. Shows up, um, dealing with. Website changes and door controls and SCADA, whatever that is, um, repair issues from storms, um. Installing new printers, um, incident command, system training, uh, and paid parking, for example, all of those being. Administrative, they might have a connection to finances, but it. It just seems to me that. Your title, um. May suggest. A more limited scope than is real. So I, I just throw that out. Um, I, I, I think you do. Tremendous work in a whole bunch of areas that you perhaps don't get sufficient recognition for.
Ms. Malincheck, you just, uh, muted by accident. So go ahead.
If I may comment, I just wanted to note that, um, under information technology, I do have, um, a staff member that does that work. I cannot take credit for all of the IT work that is done. Um, he is under my direction, um, but. He does all of that on his own, so, um. I wish I could, but I, I don't have all of the knowledge that, um, our IT holds.
Fair enough. Thank you, and I, I so much appreciate, um. That, that sort of approach, but regardless, um, it's your department, then I think it needs, um, more public recognition. Beyond that, I will go to my, my question, which is from page two of your report, um, the twenty-twenty-two. Operating Budget Summary of All Units. Are you able to? Briefly explain why there is such a wide variation? In percentage of. Um, year-to-date compared to overall budget between. Various departments. So for example, um. Revenue, I can understand revenue for finance and administration. Um, is at a very high percentage because taxes have to do, and that's where most of it comes from, but. Legislative and protective services, um. Maybe a third of the revenue has been received at half the year. Um, operations, um, quite low in comparison as well. Um, community development, very close to. Fifty percent at. Half the year. I, I just wonder what, what the difference is both with respect to. Revenue and with respect to. Expenses. And why they would be at such. Various, um. Percentages.
Um, Deputy Mayor through to your worship, um. So just looking here, um. Under. Expenses. A quick, I guess a quick, um. Summary would be that. One thing is that a lot of expenses don't come in till the end year, and one of the big ticket items that occurs is the transfer to reserves that did not occur until July. Um, so that will be noted in the next quarter. Um. That one is a big impact as well as, um. Some rev, or some expenses just don't occur until the end of the year. Um. The insurance doesn't happen until November. Um, that's a big ticket item, and, um. There, there's a few others that I could just, I'm just trying to look for them quickly, but there's a lot of things that just happen later, um, with. Even the repair, maintenance and, uh, replacement of. Ca, uh, capital projects, whatnot, so that there's a few examples of why you would see those differences, and they will, they'll, they'll come.
If I may just follow up, and I take it you are not expressing. Any concern about meeting budget targets with respect to, to revenue in particular, or overspending with respect to expenses, it's just. At mid-year, um, some things are still waiting, including transfers to reserves.
Right. Yes, um, this is very typical and very similar to what has happened in other years, for sure.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Any comments or questions? Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, uh. Deputy Mayor Demota. Um, Ms. Malincheck, I just want to go back to the parking, and, um. My recollection of our budgeting for parking was not only. The revenue from the parking. On the street. But also from Block S and from sidewalk seating. So the numbers are reported here. This is strictly the. Paid parking by individuals using our system to park on the street, not including those other two revenue sources. Is that my, my correct understanding?
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Demota, yes, that is correct. I'm just, I am just reporting on the paid. Parking portion, not on the storage lot, uh, or. Uh, um. Any of the other. Parking facilities. Exactly, uh, what you're seeing is the hotspot, um, revenue only.
Which is looking very favorable against our, I think, our total parking. Revenue that we anticipated, if we include those others in it, we should be in a very good, um. State by the end of the. Period here at the end of October. Um, and one other question if I may. Um, earlier this year, we made a couple of major capital. Um. Decisions to, for example, purchase a centrifuge. I believe in the vicinity of a quarter million dollars. Um, and there was one other piece of equipment. I, I may have the numbers wrong. Maybe it was a total of a quarter million. Those won't be reflected in the capital spending as, as yet, will they? Um, and I seem to recall that they were to be delivered in Nepal.
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Melnick. Yes, so, um, under the, um. I don't have control of the screen right now, so under the section that is labeled. Um, sewer or sanitary. Uh, there it is. Um, so yes, some of the expenses have been incurred, but as you can see, not close to what we will be anticipating for the year. And, um, I will have that update for the next quarter on where things are standing and what we are projecting for, um. Completion for the end, end of the year.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I did have some questions that were along the similar lines. As the questions that were already asked, and because we're going to get an update on our utilities model review later, uh, you know, that's certainly something I wanted to talk about there, but. Uh, getting back to the paid parking revenue, because that discussion. Uh, will be, um, part of that, will be this afternoon. Um. Ms. Malincheck, would you say that there is a consistent percentage increase month to month, uh, in respect to last year? Is it the same percentage for May, June, July? Uh, August that we saw from twenty-twenty-one, uh, understanding that it is an expanded model? Uh, and the reason I'm asking is, can we use that to? That same percentage for September and October had things been equal?
I could do that calculation, um, during the conversations, um, during utilities, um, but I did not, um, think about. Calculating the percent increase over, over one year to the next, be, just because of the, um. Because it's different, but I could look at that and do a quick synopsis of that.
No, that's fine. Um, you know, it's just because there, there was a concern about, you know, the way that we were riding, and, uh, we did get some preliminary information from Mister Given on, um. You know, some of the, the revenues that we've been getting recently as of, uh, you know, in certain days, so they're up some days and down some days. Um, but there was a suggestion that we might change what we're doing, and, um, you know, some of those financial implications. Could have some decision, um, implications as well. I'm not requiring that percentage right now. You've got other things to address, and that was an on-spot question, so not necessary. Um, other councilors, do you have? Some other insight that you may need? Or direction? Go ahead.
Thank you there, Deputy Mayor Demota. With the public budget presentation scheduled for the fourteenth and fifteenth, um, are they scheduled for daytime or evening, or have we got to that point yet?
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Melnick, um, at this point, we haven't scheduled the actual times. Generally, what we've seen is that we've presented in the evening, um, six to nine P M. However, with the change of the model, we might require additional time, um, as the senior leadership team, we have not discussed on exact times that we'd be presenting that.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Counselors? Right? Um, if there are no further questions, and you're, you know, um. The mayor had alluded to presentations earlier and a sign of a good presentation, and the fact that it might elicit many questions, but I also believe the opposite. Uh, when you have the right information provided for you, um. That means a lot of questions have been answered, so I appreciate your time and, uh, the thoroughness and the quality of the material in front of us, and I think it's. Very easy to follow in my mind, and, um, again, um, I want to just, uh, commend you on the exemplary work and your department.
Thank you.
Right, um, now that we've, uh, done Agenda Item seven point three, that's, oh, oh, sorry. Good point. Do we have a motion to receive the presentation on the, uh, summary of the operating? The Director's Report? Counselor Wiser.
Um, a motion that committee received the, uh. Uh, report or the department report from, uh, Director of. Uh, Finance and Administration.
Thank you.
For information.
Anyone else with a comment? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you for that point of order. All right. Now, is it okay to move to seven point four? Okay, I got the nod, uh, Utilities Model Review. Who would like to lead with that? Mister Reed?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I can certainly lead off, and then if, uh, Director Malincheck has anything to add, she can certainly do so. So before council, uh, is the recommendation that committee receive the utility rate model outcomes review for information. And that, uh, committee recommend to maintain the CCC model. The alternatives are that committee direct administration discontinue the utility rate model for twenty-twenty-three, or that committee direct administration present alternatives to address the treatment. Of church properties under the CCC rate model. The background, utility fees levy and collection bylaw is amended on an annual basis to reflect adjustments in rates. And/or to address technical matters. The approved twenty-twenty-two budget utility. Expenses are six point three million and change, of which three point eight is required to fund the operation of the water and wastewater systems. On January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, committee provided directions to administration to incorporate the connection, consumption and capital concept, or CCC rate model. Into the twenty-twenty-two rates, and on February first, council gave third reading to that bylaw. At that time, council also directed administration to provide an update on the outcomes of the new model after four billing cycles. And in the discussion, water and wastewater rates contained in the twenty-twenty-two utility fees levy and collection bylaw are based on three components. Consumption charges build at four different tiers based on the volume of water or wastewater. Connection and capital charges build at three different tiers based on the service line diameter. The objectives of the CCC rate model were to guarantee that the core fixed costs of operating the system are covered regardless of consumption through the stability of the connection charge component. Encourage conservation by providing financial motivation for large-volume customers to take active steps to reduce consumption through tiered consumption rates. And support equity by ensuring that those who consume more and/or generate a personal gain through commercial consumption contribute more to supporting the cost of the system. Advance asset management and reinvestment into water wastewater infrastructure by beginning a five-year phase-in to meet recommendations from the twenty-seventeen Asset Management Study. And finally, to increase transparency. And help users understand the infrastructure replacement needs of the system through capital charges. The municipality has now delivered four billing cycles under the new rate model, um, as listed. Highlights are as follows. Total revenue is in alignment with budget forecast. At the seventy-five percent point of the year, total levied revenue stands at approximately seventy-five percent. Um, about three million revenue year-to-date versus three point in forecasted. Capital and connection revenue is very consistent across billing cycle. Uh, residential customers provide a greater proportion of capital and connection charge revenue than commercial customers. Commercial customers provide a greater proportion of consumption revenue than residential customers. And consumption charges provide the majority of revenue. Consumption charges and total revenue demonstrate a very close alignment with the visitor cycle. And there are some other observations. There are some public discussions suggesting the new rate model increased residential bills by two hundred, three hundred or more percent. At the time, administration suggested on average, the increase would approximately be fifty dollars a month for most residential customers. Unfortunately, the introduction of these new rates happened at a time where water consumption rates fluctuate dramatically and when water bleeders were turned on. Along with other billing issues, such as the format of the billing template wasn't calculating properly, the ultimate impact of the new model was difficult for the public to assess. Since that time, residents who were signed up for the bleeder program received credits on their March April bill, and administration can now report that the new fees added an average of fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents per month. Or one hundred and eight dollars and thirty-three cents per billing period to residential utility account. One unexpected impact was on a church property. By definition, these properties are non-residential and typically have very low consumption, but in some cases have multiple service lines supporting different parts of the property. Because of these multiple service lines, church properties saw a significant and unexpected increase. Overall, the CCC rate model is performing as expected by generating the revenue required. That was forecast in the budget. The addition of connection and capital charges has increased revenue consistency, stability, and there are no significant unexpected outcomes of the model. The strategic relevance, um, proactively planned for and invest in the maintenance and management of our natural assets and built infrastructure. Ensure residents receive quality service that provides strong value per dollar. And pursue alternative revenue sources and equitable distribution of costs. Um, and as mentioned, the, the utility rate model is performing as expected and will generate revenue required to support the service in twenty-twenty-two. There are no direct financial impacts as a result of this recommended motion. And you have the attachment, which is the full, uh, utility update. And, uh, myself, uh, Director Malincheck, and actually, uh, and Melissa, of course, Director Gray has all put here, should you have any technical questions.
Well, thank you for that on-the-spot delivery, sir. I quite appreciate that. Um. Do councilors, any members of council? Have questions regarding? Model. Counselor Wilson.
Thank you for that. Um, it's nice to have those numbers, uh. Laid out, uh, to present to residents, uh, with the cheap four dollars a month, and it's really nice to have that, uh. At the start of, where, when we first launched this, you know, we reported to three hundred percent, two hundred percent, whatever it was, it's, uh, I'm glad that we've taken the time to, um. Review over the last four billing cycles and, and have some substantiated numbers to, uh, su, support the model. Uh, my question, um, would it be?
And have some substantiated numbers to support the model. Uh, my question, um, would it be to? The alternative that uh, committee direct administration present alternatives to treatment of church properties? Um, is it more than just one church property? And also, is it uh? Do you see? Um, drastic change in numbers uh, if that church property were to be assessed differently or worked uh. Charged differently for their, for their sort of. Uh, thank you, um, Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Wilson. I think I shall have to defer this one to Director Malincheck. If you have any, uh, no.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Wilson. Um, the only one that has been reported to us was the one. Um, because of the two lines, um, we can do a study to see um, how much each one. Is um, paying and see the differences. Um, it is possibility, obviously, um. And I didn't hear the second part of your question.
Well, just assuming that it is only one church property that had uh, some anomalies to their, their um. Their bill, I I would suspect that it wouldn't drastically change the numbers that we're reviewing today. Uh, if there were, wanted to be charged by, for one connection.
Correct, uh, it, the, the one, um, if it was adjusted, would, would not drastically change what you're seeing here today.
And then I guess the follow-up to that question is that have other church, like, so there, there is an alternative on the um. Uh, request or decision that uh, we, we get, we get the administration present alternatives uh, for church properties that. Is there been a request by other, like a group churches that were, uh, for these properties, or is it just really the one we're kind of doing?
So far, there's, sorry. So, so far, there is just the one.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ray. Do you want to add in that as well?
I was only going to say that the recommendation indicates that administration would bring further information back, should that be required of council, so. You know, we, we don't have the full data at this time.
Well, when it comes to property tax, they are zone differently. All churches are too institutional. And uh, I'm not sure if the properties that require more water are still under that. Kind of area of thought, so to speak, and if it's under the same umbrella of thought and. Um, you know, if there was a conversation about uh, releasing some revenue in that regard, that's going to cause increases in other places. So it's a matter of, you know, how unjust is it and um, what are the implications of changing that? Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Um, my first question is what would cause a difference in? Billing with capital and connection, because I was under the impression it was somewhat fixed, ju- just curious. My second question is, um, I'm happy to see that the average home was right around where what I looked for. Are there any residents that have bigger lines, or have there been any residents that have had big, like, differences like the church?
Um, so Deputy Mayor Demota through Counselor Hall. Um. I'll, I'll ask if Director Malincheck has anything to add first.
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Hall. Um, so as you can see, the connection uh, sites or they have different, they do have different meter sizes. You can see that, um, for instance, if you go to uh, the first page of the utility update. On um, the connection fee, there are under one, one inch as well as one point five inch and greater than one point five inch. For residential as well as commercial, so they do, there are different sizes for each type. Um, and then the other question about um. Um, we haven't seen or heard of any that have had two connections like the uh, church has. And um, the site connections, so uh, connection fees and the differences of the. The revenue or levies applied, some have been still coming online. Um, with new development, not tons, but there have been new developments come on.
Okay, and if, if I may just add, um, Director Malincheck, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we are to look at that chart you just mentioned. Um, less than one inch, we see that's the large majority of residential uh, input, right? And then one point five. Seemingly one or two accounts, and then what are let large, greater than one point five is also a very small number. So I think to answer your question, Counselor Hall, you know, how many residences would be affected by the larger line? You can see proportionally, it is a small number. Is that fair to say, Director Malincheck?
Yes, correct.
Thank you for that. I, I think my first question, um, I might have not worked it properly, but the revenue that we've seen in the four billing cycles, there is a little bit of fluctuation. Capital connection, just letting me what, I, I, I do understand the differences in um, billing for different pipe sizes, but why would? March April be just under two hundred thousand, and then May and June be two hundred and seven thousand? Just, just curious, because I did understand those fees be quite set. I know it's a small amount, but I'm just wondering what, why there is differences in the revenue we collected in those billing cycles.
Deputy Mayor through to um, Counselor Hall, I did um. Say something in regards to that. Um, there are, even though that, um, there's not many developments occurring. But there are some that have um, been just coming online. Um. So with development of new properties and then them coming on to the, the grid, say. Um, then we would start charging them once they start, once they're connected and start using the service.
Thank you. While we're waiting for uh, others to uh. Develop some questions, um. Ms. Malincheck and or um. Mr. Gray there or Mr. Reed? Whoever can answer this. I know that, um, you know, we're achieving uh, the revenue objectives and um. Before going in, we knew that there were some uh, anomalies in oversized connections for fire protection and. Uh, even though there wouldn't, unless uh, the fire protection was going to be in use. Um, based on consumption, they were built accordingly, but um, might be overcharged because of the size of. There might lead to building, for example, a fire suppression system, the newer ones require uh, larger. Pain sizing, so because their consumption might be low, they still might be charged for having that safety measure put into their building. There was this big discussion on that, and I just wanted to see if um, our findings so far have. Created a kind of an injustice charge.
Um, I'll, I'll take the first step, uh, Deputy Mayor Demota, and then of course, if uh, Director Malincheck wants to ask. The short answer is uh, residents and businesses are paying for the services they receive. So you mentioned rightly, um, consumption may be lower at a certain business or residence that has a large feeder. But they are paying for the service and the usage. And so that large feeder is going into that premises, and they are reaping the benefits of that large feeder, which may be. Manyfold, as was mentioned, perhaps in lower insurance rate because they have ease rate as an example. So no, this report does not indicate any in uh, uh, findings of what you termed injustices. Um, the only issue is this unique situation on the church, which we've covered.
Right.
Um, but there, the report indicates that we are proposing, based on the data that we have, to continue with this model. Um, indicating that any injustices that have been found, for example, in Aaron's billing, were addressed and dealt with. And the model itself is sent. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and, and forgive the sema- semantics, that was just the word that came to my head at the time and um. I, I hope that people aren't feeling that they were treated that way, and it's just, you know, I think just anomalies. Is kind of the word, it shouldn't stop too, but yeah, that's good. Um, Mr. Gray, I look like he had uh, something to add as well.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, one thing I'd like to point out to is when a property is developed, they approach. There's a requirement for the developer to approach the town and enter into a municipal services agreement. So that's where their designers, their architects specify what size connection. Um, is required for their building uh, based on their design. It's not something that the municipality is prescriptive on. We do not tell um, users what size connection they need. Um, so that is something that's um. Uh, you know, on the developers, uh, and when they design their building. Uh, it's so the, the connection size um, is dictated by the developer. Also, um, I would like to point out too that there is um, a difference between household meter, which is five eighths or three quarters size. Uh, they come in around four hundred and eighty dollars for a meter, a four-inch meter for um. A commercial property can come in at over seven thousand dollars for that, for that meter, so. Um, the cost of the service connections actually is quite exponential um, as you go on. Uh, and I'd just like to bring those uh, myself.
That's great. I understand that, and you know, to uh, for people that are businesses that are developing, uh, whether. Uh, you're residential or, or commercial, um, having the, the new model, the C C C model, three Cs. Um, there is, there's an understanding when going forward that there's, those modes are in place. However, um, if you built on s- uh, on specific design prior to that model changing. Uh, and, and weren't, um, you know, familiar with that type or used to getting that type of billing. I could see why there could be some, um, you know, feeling of, uh, maybe unfairness. I understand it. Um, you've clarified, both of you have clarified of why that's clear. Um, I'm just coming out from a point of view that prior to that, had people known. You know, they could have better prepared themselves for that, but um, we didn't, and now we're just kind of working, moving forward. Thank you. Counselor Connor.
I'm just curious, in the report it says, um, which is, because that's what I bet is at home, it's six four dollars um, every month, about a hundred and eight dollars. And it all started out from speakers, we got. How does that fare with a commercial property? Because we had a lot of reports that we went up three hundred percent, four hundred percent. So when the billing level goes, um, after their leaders came off, just on those market properties. How did that billing, I bet they still, have they gone up a hundred percent, or two hundred percent, you know, or have that so?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Keller MP. I think we'd have to defer that one to Director Malincheck for sure.
Uh, Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Helen K- Keller MP, um. Uh, can I rephrase that? Are you looking for whether or not the credits have been reapplied to the accounts that saw the increases initially?
Just like in the report, like if somebody had a bleeder on, got a big bill in January February, and then once the bleeder come off. We got a credit on our residential and our home bills, that was about fifty-four, four dollars per month. When we started this program, we had a, the chamber and a lot of members say their bills went up. Four hundred percent, five hundred percent, you know, two hundred percent. So when the bleeders come off those properties, did they see a big difference in their bill?
Yes, this changed um, those properties back to be a normal amount, so they received their credit in the next billing cycle. And then that would have been applied to their prior bill, and then they would have seen normal. Bills coming through. It was the bleeders that was causing the increase that was being reported in that's. Two, three, four hundred percent um, amount. It was all bleeders. And they've all been corrected since, yeah.
Have you seen us complaints then from the um, commercial side now that all the bills went out?
No, we have not seen um, any recent complaints since everything's been leveled, leveled out and, and gotten to where. It normally would look like, so no other complaints have been received that I've been informed of from my staff anyway. Um, so it, it definitely changed. A lot of people were confused with the problem with the bill. Um, and it not printing out correctly, as well as the bleeders causing a lot of people to. Um, react knowing that the, the, the concept or the C C C model had been applied. And that they weren't considering that they had the bleeders hooked up, and that that's why that they were seeing those uh, drastic increases.
Thank you, Ms. Malincheck.
You're welcome.
Counselor Waxer?
Uh, just in the context of understanding that a number of uh, congregations of churches. Have been um, shutting down or considering shutting down, um. I am concerned that uh, that the utility model may hasten that process. And um, so my quest, the one question I had is important for me to understand from the uh, report. Is they say that typically the uh, church, churches in general have low consumption. Um, but the church in question would have multiple lines, but also low consumption.
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Waxer, um, the, the multiple lines is what was um, changing their bill drastically. If they had one line going in, they pay by the meter and by the size of the meter, so. That's what was drastically changing those bills for them. Their consumption would have been um, changing the amount that they. They paid by, it actually probably, well, it would have been less than they paid in prior years for the same consumption, because. If they didn't get into the next tier, then they wouldn't be paying more. Um, so it, it would have been the um, capital and connection uh, fees that were affecting the, that property. Especially because of the double um, source to the building.
And so my secondary question is that the recommendation from administration is that committee receive. The utility rate model review for information and maintain a C C C model. And an alternative might be to add. The committee direct administration to present alternatives to address the, for the church property. So I'm, my question is, um, is the recommendation that we um, don't, we just accept it as is? Or do we, do you recommend that we make such a consideration of this anomaly?
I can speak to the recommendation, um, Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Waxer and all council. The recommendation is that we maintain the model as is. Um, the, you know, the, the large increases and the large overbillings uh, have been rectified through. Through residential and commercial, and if there were any institutional properties, they would also have been corrected thus far. And so the administrative recommendation is yes, we would keep it as is, we would not make any changes. If council were to feel that the, the particular case of this one church. Which we would then expand to look at all churches and make sure that it is still equitable. If you feel that that is an issue that you would like us to address under a different motion, then we could present alternatives for churches. Is, is the way the alternative works. So yes, if you accept this uh, outcome review report for information, then. That is indicating that we will continue on the path as already directed by council. If you want to make any changes to that, you do need to make specific motions for us.
Thank you, and, and before I, I defer to Mayor, um, I'm just, I understand that there's a. A level of privacy that needs to be attached to this. privacy that needs to be attached to this particular conversation, but there is some vagueness on what's actually happening and why. So without that information, it's really hard to move forward because, you know, we don't want to talk about any specifics, but there was an increase in revenues to the municipality and unexpected to that property. And that's an increase of their fees going up on that side for whatever particular reasons they may be that aren't documented in this. So it's very difficult to say in my mind, well, let's do a full review and we don't understand the ramifications. Are those lines going to sell with private house? And are those lines going to a business? You know, like that isn't there? I would probably not, but without that extra information, it's hard to make an informed decision.
If I may, Deputy Mayor Demora and all of council, the specifics of each case, you're right, we are not going to speak of in, in open council meetings. However, what administration is proposing is that our system works as we presented that it would and anomalies within it have been dealt with successfully. It is meeting market or rather budget proposal and projections. If council feels that churches are a separate concern that need to have a different rule applied or need to have different rules researched, so you could pick a different rule, which is what we're proposing, we would present alternatives if you feel that churches as a class need to have different rule. Because the short answer to the detail you're looking for is the accounts have been rectified. We're not saying that there's something weird going on. A church has two services. That increase due to the fact that they have two services is surprising to them and surprising that they had two services. But the mystery is not, it was only that it's a surprise, not that it's not happening or that it's going somewhere weird. It's, it's simply that they have two services, so they're getting billed for two services. And so should that be the concern that council wishes to address? You would do that with an alternative motion.
Again, I apologize if that came across differently, but I mean, I didn't want to assume there's anything weird going on, but at the same time, there, it is a vague aspect of this part of the presentation. That's all, that's all I would say to me.
And, and I would look to Director Malincheck if I have misrepresented any of that. But yeah, the vagaries only exist because there isn't anything to talk about. There's, there's no mystery that we're hiding or, or haven't spoken of because there is no mystery existing. Director Malincheck, is that a fair statement? Oh.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. Not sure where to begin. But I will say that one of the overriding principles from my perspective was the principle of equity. And I am not yet satisfied that we have achieved equity in the way I am, and that's particularly equity within and between some classes. So the, the information we have indicates that residential customers provide a greater proportion of capital and connection charges. Would that be a proportion of a residential bill as opposed to the proportion of the overall revenue generated by the system? So they're paying a higher proportion, I presume, monthly, and that is the fifty-four dollar question, supposedly. And they're paying maybe less for consumption. But that middle bullet point in the second page confuses me. It says residential customers provide a greater proportion of capital and connection charge revenue. Is that our total revenue? Surely that, that cannot be correct.
If, if I may, Deputy Mayor, through to your worship and all of council, and I will of course again, open the door for Director Malincheck, but there are certainly the greater proportion of the number of residences, so simple residential connections is very easily the, the explanation here. There will be eleven hundred residential connections and there will only be about a third as many commercial connections, if not less. And so the, the, the proportions you see there, seventy percent of our revenue on capital and connection charge are coming from residential customers. So that's the number of connections matches up. And then the eighty-one nineteen or sixty-nine thirty-one, commercial customers provide a greater proportion of consumption. Again, that's simply the number of leaders that went past their meters, not based on any sort of factoring at all, right? It's simply that's how many leaders they use at the hotels and restaurants versus how many leaders are residents. Director Malincheck, how am I doing?
Yes, I would say wonderful. I was going to allude to the bottom of the last sheet of the utility summary where we have included the units residential wise. So it's eleven hundred ninety-nine to a hundred and eighty-one units of commercial. So you can see the split of eighty-seven to thirteen there on residential to commercial in properties. In the connection and capital fees, the residents are paying seventy percent, which is less than the amount of the units. However, they are paying significantly less in the consumption and the commercial is paying significantly more in their consumption. So it does level out to be, that's what changes the equation, is the commercial and how much they use in water and the amount of sewage going out. So I think it's fairly, fairly close in, in that sense.
Thank you. But I I will remain surprised, but I will figure that out soon and come to grips with it. I can, I would have thought that the the pipe size connected to connection and capital charges, which would be applicable to non-residential more than residential would have skewed those numbers much more than it did. And so if this is the case, and I will accept your word, what then is the difference in proportionality from the previous system? So at, at some point, we had a system that didn't have connection and capital charge. We thought we could achieve greater equity by changing to the CCC model. So can we say who paid what when it was simply a consumption? I take it that commercial sector, non-residential, as we do now, pays significantly more based on consumption?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through your worship. The short answer is I think you've nailed it. The longer answer is I will defer over to Director Malincheck. If you understand that question, Ms. Malincheck?
Yes, um, the figures are not at hand. I would have to dig them up to see what the percentage of res versus non-res were last year to give you those figures.
If I may, again, sorry. But it is absolutely fair to say when we're not doing the capital and connection charges, you can see by the usage that, that this did change the overall equitable fee of the system. So previously, the high usage leaders, just straight by usage, would have paid more proportion of the overall cost. Now we have portioned that out over three factors and the cap and connection or capital and connection is based on the connection itself. So that means now residences are paying a higher proportion of the capital size than they ever were before, when it was all based on just leaders through the meter. So, so yes, as far as if our goal in equitability was to put the costs where they are actually being met or, or created, the cost for me to have a service in my house is now applied to my house as opposed to factored over all of the leaders to the meter. So I think you're right on the money as to whether or not that's the equitability that council wanted. That is the equitability that, that this has achieved. And from an operation point of view, I'll, I'll speak for Director Grayhead. When we have to buy the five hundred dollar meter or the five thousand dollar meter, it should apply to the location we bought it for. And so in this case, now that is the equitability. My house, my meter are applied to my bill. And, you know, a certain hotel meter, that meter is applied to their bill. So that equitability or at least transparency is, I think, shown by the system.
All good, thank you. The same equitability issue though arises, it seems to me then, with respect to the church property. So the connection capital charge based on meter size, based on pipe size, if there is a benefit of having a larger pipe, which we're, we're going to say is the benefit that a non-residential unit goes for. If there's a meter required for a church, I presume there is, then there's a cost associated with that, what we're saying or seem to want to suggest. It's inequitable to apply that to a church property, but it is equitable to apply it to another commercial property. And one of the challenges that we faced early on and regardless of, of bleeders was the inequitable treatment of commercial properties that didn't have a choice of what size pipe they had, but they had to pay more depending on the pipe size. So the question that I have is whether we can achieve greater equity within that class of rate payer based on selecting a different pipe size as the trigger point. So I'm only favoring keeping the CCC model. I think it does work, but can we adjust within that model to achieve greater equity among different types of users?
And thank you, Deputy Mayor, through the, your worship. You could, that's true. And that is one of the things with an alternative motion to ask us to look at alternatives to the CCC model for churches to address the treatment of church properties in the CCC model, not, not necessarily stopping the CCC model. In fact, administration would not recommend that by any stretch. However, you may be right that if we were to say, change it from one inch, one and a half and two, from one inch to two and four, that perhaps then the church falls under this different billing regime. And administration is not proposing that, partly because yeah, we haven't seen that that would be the way to solve this problem. The question I think we're more correctly asking is, are churches to be found in some way exempt from the normal transparent passing on of the cost to the direct user? Is that the question that council wishes to see? But under the proposal, the alternative is that you would direct administration to present alternatives to address the treatment of church properties under the CCC model and changing the meter size is one way that we could present, yes.
Thank you. And I, I will conclude. And I, I, I'm not trying to draw you into debate. And I, I accept that from my own perspective. We ought to do equity to the church property. But my challenge to council is whether we ought to try and do equity to more than just churches? And have we achieved the equity we were looking for? Not in the model, which I accept and will support continuation, but potentially subject to change of the way that fees are charged. So changing the details, not changing the model is, is what I'm suggesting, but I, as I say, I'm not trying to draw you into debate on that. I'm putting that out for council consideration. That we had this opportunity to reflect, as we said we would, and we first passed this back in February to be effective for January, February. We said we would come back and revisit it after four billing cycles. And it seems to me that we have an opportunity now to reconsider and, and again, can we achieve greater equity? I don't know, but I would like to debate that, I don't know.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go first to Councilor Demora and Councilor Wachter.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. I think, I, I agree with the mayor that we keep the, the model, but within that model, we may expand one, one of the categories or take a look at the higher categories of one point five and above and maybe break out and see is there a two inch, two and a half and three and above three category, which may make things more equitable amongst the commercial ratepayers. I do note that we are actually not seventy-five percent through the year, but we're sixty-six percent of the way through the year. But we've got seventy-five percent of the revenue and I'm going to attribute that to, I believe a lot of that is going to be the consumption. But if we are at seventy-five percent of the capital and connection, when we're sixty-six percent of the way through the year, we may have got those wrong. And we may be overcharging and collecting more than we intended to in those two categories. So I, I do think it's warranted for us to take a look more specifically at the one point five and above and break those out. I think we probably have done fairly well with the residential and the fifty dollar average per month. I think that's about what we said it would be. But I think we have an opportunity to take a look and maybe adding a couple of more rate categories to make the higher end more equitable among the ratepayers and to make sure that we're not overcollecting.
Thank you for that input. Councilor Malincheck, those are good observations and some things that we did discuss earlier on in the year.
Councilor? Well, that, Councilor Malincheck went first because my question was really to Mayor Ireland was, what are, what are you suggesting? Like more equity in the size of pipe? Because prior to, or sorry, earlier in the season when we were discussing, it was, you, you had other ideas of how that equitability could be could be divided. Like, I think there was one suggestion on how many, how many bathrooms or within a place or how many sinks, whatever it is. I think that gets very confusing. I, I, I am an advocate for the pipe size. But Councilor Malincheck, it doesn't, maybe one, one point five and higher, breaking those out, maybe that is the, the the, the way, like, I know I support that, but I also do support carrying on with the, the CCC model as it is.
Well, if no one else has anything to add at this moment, do you have something that you wanted to say?
Well, I prepared a new motion, I suppose. I have inclined to think that we perhaps should not make a decision on this today. It was a very live topic several months ago. We've just gone through an emergency and many people have their attention focused elsewhere. I think we ought to provide an opportunity for others to engage if they, if they choose. My inclination is to have a motion that committee recommend to council that council received the utility rate model outcomes review for information that we recommend, that committee recommends to council that the CCC model be retained and that committee direct administration to present alternatives to the calculation of charges within the CCC model to achieve greater equity. And all of that would not come back to council until we get that report, which will give an opportunity. And all of that would not come back to council until we get that report, which will give an opportunity for. Ratepayers to make any further submissions that they might wish to do.
So you said you might put forward the motion. Is that the motion you're going forward? Maybe, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure if I heard that right.
Um that 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 will be my most.
Okay, and. I did want to say something before, but I could still apply it. Uh Ms. Acor, did you get that? As far as what the attention of the motion was? Okay, well, we have video review afterwards. All right, but everyone understands the motion. Okay, would anyone like to speak to it? Uh Mayor Ireland had just addressed. One thing that I did want to say uh was that, you know. If there are major inequities, people are going to voice their opinions, and I'm not sure what kind of correspondence we've got, but. We've seen that, you know, when when there's uh proceed issues in the community, people will come forward. Letters do get written and. Correspondence does come through uh certain portals and information and communication gets to council. I haven't seen a lot. Uh but you know, um to the circumstances that the mayor spoke to, we we have gone through a little bit of adversity recently and. Maybe people weren't paying attention before they were, and we did get a lot of comments, and I would like to see a little bit more feedback, so I'm supporting this motion. And no, that's fine. So if anybody else has anything to add, uh Mr. Reed.
Um thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. I only want to add that um myself and Director Malencheck. Uh want to make a mention of the point that that councillor uh Melnick makes. And we will clarify and make sure um. It is certainly possible that the numbers are right and we have the data for the seventy-five percent. This didn't include the last uh two-month billing period or uh something along those lines. So. You know, should this uh motion pass, it would give us the time to clarify and accurately reflect exactly where that sixty-six versus seventy-five.
Thank you for that point clarification, Mr. Mayor.
And if I might be permitted, um I did not. Potentially omit um church properties, so for the last clause of my motion. Um that um committee direct administration present alternatives. For the calculation of charges. Including church properties. I mean, I. It might be that there's a different treatment for churches than we would be for non-residential properties, and that's fine. I think we should deal with the church issue as well, but I think more holistically, we should deal. With a reconsideration equity on it on a general scale.
Is it? That's not going to look like a Star Wars intro, that motion? No, okay. Um so if everyone understands that, uh oh, Counselor Wilson.
Sorry, I I don't see the the necessity to uh. Single out churches. Uh and so. Right, like I feel that I I wouldn't support the alternative. Uh to the recommendation. I do support your motion, but I but but honestly, I I don't, I think we're making a big deal over. Uh church properties for one one anomaly. So I would say equity or I don't, I yeah, I don't, I prefer not to have the. The uh highlighted church properties uh in the motion. You couldn't. It's my favorite.
Well. I think administration has served it. So if we pass a motion directing them to come back with alternatives. Maybe there'll be an alternative in any of which property set out. I would be content with that.
Anyone else have any comments or? Debate? Mr. Mayor.
And Counselor, Counselor Wilson.
Is that?
They voted for you.
Yeah. I'm okay. I wanted to say something, but I'll wait. All right. All in favor of the mayor's motion?
Any post, not opposed, that's fair, thank you.
There are thousands, okay. Thank you very much, everyone, for assisting us through that. Now that we've completed the utilities mo- model review, how long have we been back? We're just over an hour.
Well.
Okay, uh let's move on to um Petro Canada and the report there. Who would like to lead that? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Grayhead.
Good afternoon, council. Um the request for decision in front of you here is uh regarding the left turn option for the Petro Canada by the Bright Spot Restaurant on the. Um corner of Cana and Hazel. Uh the recommendation is that committee receive this report for information. Alternative would be that committee direct administration prepare local and Cuban by uh levy by law to facilitate the proposed access. And return to a future of the committee in the whole. That's the background here during the cannot um or Jasper Canaan Offstate Services Project where we uh installed the. Uh deep services and sidewalk um. Uh for the development of the uh CA, um sorry, GAG, EHC parcels. Um we temporarily moved, removed the curves and constructed an access to support these business on the way on uh west of Hazel Avenue. Due to the uh due to the disruption caused by the project. Uh effectively, if we hadn't have put those in, they would have had no vehicular access at all. Um just as we had the way we had to shape the road. So this was a workaround so that we could um. Ensure that they at least had some business uh during this uh long-duration project. It started in. Um mid-August and was completed the first week of summer. Um so once the work was complete, the curves in the median were replaced, closing the access to the property. Uh by westbound broad uh traffic, and we restored the median to its original uh design. During this time, we were asked um if we could leave the. Uh those left-hand access um. Open to that property, and it was decided that due to the close proximity of our one traffic lane in town. And the um stacking up that we I noticed on onsite of vehicles wanting to make a left-hand turn lane. Uh that we wouldn't consider it at that point, and we and we restored the curve median. Um so council was um approached to consider the installation of a new left-turn lane to allow for increased traffic flow to this property. Uh administration worked with WSB to design and assess the viability of the construction of turning lane to allow access to this property. WSB uh reviewed the site and has concerns with the potential impacts of this new new turning lane without doing a full traffic impact assessment. Excuse me, the issues that will need to be addressed as per the uh traffic impact assessment. Are the sightlines of the westbound left turn uh movement. The proposed left turn lane is located on a horizontal curve. Trees on the median will block the westbound turning lane. Um turning vehicles, driver sightlines uh to the oncoming vehicles, such as provide a clear uh sightline triangle. Um trees on the median within the uh driver's sightline need to be removed. The westbound left turn lane storage uh length uh would have to be assessed. The proposed left turn uh storage length should be able to accommodate the left uh number of left turning vehicles um. And we want to make sure that the vehicle queue does not spill back into the um. Um adjacent uh westbound lanes and hinder the intersection of Canaan and Hazel. Uh concerns left-hand turning uh from Canora from the commercial development on the west. Hand, um there were concerns of left-hand turning uh traffic from the commercial development onto the westbound lane of Canaan, so coming back out of that Petro Canada site. Um adequate lane width to safely accommodate large vehicles with potential swing issues. The separation distance uh from Hazel uh Avenue, which is where we were noticing that the vehicles would stack up. And then spilling of traffic on site onto the roadway during the hours. So that was some of the concerns that were listed by WSB. So for the above listed reasons. Administration does not recommend proceeding with the requested installation of a left turn lane. If council did wish to advance this proposal, administration would recommend that the cost be a hundred percent funded by the benefiting property. Uh there's a brief uh a very um low-level estimate, uh wouldn't even consider to cost the estimate at this point. But we're looking at in over a quarter million dollars to add that left turn lane. Uh into the property, uh twenty-five thousand dollars roughly for a traffic impact assessment. We would need to relocate um the street lights. Um demolition of the road and the curb, uh installing the new turn lanes. The new curves, the island's signage. Um adjustment of the utilities and some of the overall engineering would be. Um some other items that our ballpark is looking at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And um attached to this uh RFD is conceptual drawing. Uh in an illustrates a coach style RV, so I believe there uh to scale, this was a forty-five foot long um vehicle. Uh in scale, and it's the worst-case scenario because that has the largest turning um and it's. Uh largest turning radius and the most uh swing motion involved during turns. So this type of vehicle, um it requires a much larger opening to accommodate its turning movements. And that would make it difficult as well to um. Prohibit vehicles exiting that property to turn left and go westbound on Canaan. Um the traffic impact assessment should also look at whether the increase in traffic volumes would be and the impacts it would have onto the adjacent public. And um you can see in package, there is kind of the rough design. Uh of the road shape that would need to happen to facilitate this term link. And um I I that's about it. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grayhead. Counselors. Looks pretty straightforward to me, and I understand why. It's it's unfortunate that we have to factor in worst-case scenarios because that doesn't represent. Uh the majority of vehicles out there, but we do need to consider them. Um there is quite a bit of uh work that would need to be done, and I think that those. To me, I'm I'm high in the industry, so I wouldn't know that that two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is kind of low, especially when you're considering relocating street funds. Counselor, Counselor Wilson.
Um just. Question on timing, uh was this uh requested by um benefiting business before? Uh the roadwork was done or during the roadwork was done, not not yet?
Uh thank you, Counselor Wilson. Uh no, that was um. Uh asked during the project, once we had opened the road out to uh give them temporary access to the property. Yeah, to my knowledge, it was never raised before.
Well, I I work across the street in that property, and I also used to to be a service provider there. Um to one of the the businesses, and I I see their argument and. Uh the reason why they'd like to have that that lane there, because it is quite difficult. Um and they often say you're practically in bail on by the time you have to turn around and come back. Um but you know, at the same time, um you know, this request that it was going to come to taxpayer dollars. I can't see going that way because you are providing that fair advantage, or I'm sorry, I shouldn't say unfair. I think conceptually, other businesses would think that you're providing an advantage for business. So uh if those costs were going to be. Um assumed, I would hope that it would be for those that would want that there and the business. Itself, that's just me personally, but I I see why they would like that there and and I would like to support it. But not if it's going to be a uh. A nightmare to to that area of the community, especially the drought. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. I would like to think that we proceed on the basis of. Solid factual information. I certainly understand the concerns that have been made evident by the schematic that's provided. But I would be inclined to say that. If the proponent wants to spend money on a traffic impact analysis. And if that's presented to us and traffic engineers can configure. Um a safe proposal for this. Paid for by the proponent. And I might not be opposed. Um. In one sense, I I look at it a bit as a harm reduction strategy. I'm aware that there are lots of U-turns at the end of that wall. And that can't be a safe thing either. Uh it's not signed for no U-turns. And particularly, if you look at this schematic, if somebody in a. Forty or forty-five foot motorhome decides to do a U-turn of a block down to combat. Um we are setting the stage for calamity. Um so maybe um if it is something that. Could be achieved, again, um there's a proponent, it's for the benefit of their business. If they want to come up with the funds for. A traffic impact analysis that's presented to us, we can review that and see where we're at, with the understanding that if it goes ahead. The entire cost, whatever it might be, is upon the proponent. I will be prepared to to look at it again. And I I recognize, as Deputy Mayor Demora indicated, that. If we do it once, um there are other businesses that might see an advantage. There's another gas station. A block west that, you know, we get traffic from. From one side, I think that would be an even more difficult configuration to make. A left turn through a cutaway and a curve there, but if we do it once. We might be forced to do it again, but again, if we base our decisions on. Solid factual evidence um by professionals, then I would feel safe with doing it. Maybe that's. That's my idea is that we could offer them an option to come back. With a professional traffic impact analysis before we consider it.
Great, so we have an option, we have a couple of options here um versus to accept this. Uh information and then um. Could there be one that committee direct administration to? Present the proponent using measures uh with a traffic impact analysis. You know, direction that they should complete that located for that, who would set them up for that? I'm not sure. Mr. Grayhead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um uh I think that this could be handled a few different ways. And um I think that if I stick to the administration's recommendation to receive this report for information. Um that would be sufficient. Um we didn't have that alternative of having uh the proponent provide at uh TIA. On that um administration could reach out to the proponent. And say that um it was discussed that council and council would receive um a TIA uh. Conducted, and if they wanted to chase this further along in that that uh traffic impact assessment would be um borne by them solely and not our responsibility, the municipality.
I think um I like that. For me personally, um it was an idea that the mayor presented um and not council as a whole, so. I think that I I will hold the firm that had not with suffice here, but. I'm not sure where the rest of council would say, but I think that you would give a specific direction, I think. Does that? Mr. Mayor.
If it would be helpful, I'm happy to help. Um. My motion is that. Committee receive this report for information. And direct administration to invite. The component, proponent to provide. To council for a little consideration. A traffic impact assessments to be paid for entirely by the proponent. And i- if they choose not to do that, that's fine, but we just invite them to. If they want to further this discussion well. And revise your report.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, I I would uh agree with that, but I would also want to know that uh. Any construction on this would be at their cost, like fully at their cost. And so I guess we we want to go to the proponent to suggest, do you understand what the costs are, you know? This is a rough estimate, but could be. Quite a further northern number. So I'm just clarifying that. We we're not looking forward ever, even if you've gone to all of this uh work divided in the day.
Now, in the floor, just I guess the understanding too that just because of the traffic. Impact assessment does take place doesn't mean that it's a it's going to be asked by council. Uh, if it if it's set upon that, so it's definitely something to consider here, but um I went. In the support of what the mayors would go to again, what Counselor Wilson is suggesting as far as the understanding goes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Demora. Looking to perhaps streamline this a bit and perhaps also make it a little more transparent. I did hear uh in this discussion that you would be willing to entertain. Any traffic assessment that indicated a perspective change to our traffic flow from a proponent who wished to see it changed me. And so. Uh, I would offer the suggestion, the humble suggestion that receiving the report for information. And and indicating to administration that. In any opportunities such as this, where a traffic flow change is recommended by a landlord. That or a proponent, that that the costs for the study for that. Issue would be borne by the landlord and any cost to change in traffic flow would be borne by any proponent. And in that way, it's not specific to this. It is, you're indicating how you would like to see these type of events dealt with, rather than this one. As you indicated, if the one that's in the middle of the block also says, well, actually, that's a great idea for me as well. We we would treat it the same uh if we were going to be our most transparent.
To your motion.
Thank you for this suggestion. I agree. Consistency and transparency are both important. Um. I struggle a little bit with. Potential for. Somebody to come forward with a proposal that is, for example, a safety proposal, not necessarily beneficial to a business, so. Yeah, a business could come forward and say, you know, you should have a stop sign there, or you should have no parking there because it. Includes the view or whatever, and then we have to paint a line and. Um, maybe that's for the benefit of public safety, not for the benefit. So I. I I appreciate what you're saying in general terms, but when you use the word any um any application, I'm not. I'm not. Totally convinced that any application falls under the same rules as one that is for a particular commercial benefit.
Okay, if if I may, Deputy Mayor Demora, through to worship and all of council. You actually highlight this very well, Mr. Mayor. And in all honesty, I do believe that the discussion had in front of the public with administration in the room is the most important part of this. And the spirit of their discussion is recorded and is noted by administration and. In in retrospect, or with with this added discussion, I would suggest that you you've done your informing as needed to the public as well as the administration. And that receiving this report for administration with the discussion newly noted accomplishes your goal. And that's actually where my humble recommendation or advisement would go. Um, and I thank you for that, uh, for.
Because as it stands, okay. On favor.
That's scary, sorry.
Yeah, it was asked, it was asked, right, the recommendation.
As spoken anyway.
As spoken by the mayor.
I will help you afterwards.
Okay. I appreciate all the input, the information, and um. The effort behind the document, bringing it forward, and appreciate your time and patience, Mr. Greathead, especially for. Leading up most of the uh meetings today. That brings us to um. Agenda item seven point six, and um as we've gone an hour and a half, that's usually where I like to take my comfort break. I know these are going on, but. I could see some of us, some of our attentions kind of drifting here. There's lots of yawn, so I think either a fresh air break or whatever you need to do. Uh, we're going to come back at five two. Give me a five uh minute break here. You can be. Right, uh, back from recess, um, I will call this meeting back to order for the eleven. Uh, today. And we can add some levity here. Okay, so we've uh completed discussion on um. The Petro Canada, and we're here to discuss the uh position on private home accommodations, seven point six. Who likes to lead it?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora and through to council. So on behalf of Mr. Given, uh, I'll present this item. Uh, the recommendation is that committee recommend council approve the municipal input on private home accommodation regulations as presented. And direct administration to forward the information to Parks Canada for their consideration. The alternatives are that committee direct administration provide additional or different input to Park Standard on PHA regulations. Or that committee recommend council request Park Canada maintain the current regulations on PHAs and lift the moratorium on new PHA application. Um, again, I won't read this verbatim. I think uh council is well uh aware of the process, but in twenty nineteen. Municipality of Jasper and Parks Canada Agency jointly retained a consultant to review issues related to accessory dwelling units. And private home accommodations in the town site. The intent of the review was to develop a series of recommendations related to encouraging more housing for eligible residents. While managing the impact of tourist accommodations on the supply of affordable housing. The review included public engagement activities in the spring of nineteen. And led to the completion of the accessory dwelling units and private home accommodations options and recommendations report. Later that fall, in early twenty twenty. Uh, following that report, parks placed a temporary moratorium on issuing new PHA application. Then in early May, council received correspondence from parks inviting feedback on a suite of proposed amendments. Following public feedback, the proposed amendments amendments were withdrawn by parks. The best currently available information indicates there are approximately a hundred and forty existing PHAs advertising a total of approximately a hundred and eighty guest rooms. Available for rent in Jasper. The municipality requires all PHA operators to maintain valid municipal business license. The discussion, the changes to the regulations proposed by proposed by parks in early May elicited a significant amount of public feedback. And were withdrawn before the municipality had an opportunity to thoroughly analyze them. Given that administration has not yet seen a revised suite of regulations, the position below is presented in two sections. Foundational principles and comment on the main proposal. Uh, relevant votes led to placement. Uh, this is strategic relevance, of course. Communicate and engage with residents, welcome the expertise, innovation, creativity, and commitment of community members, groups, and associations. And contribute our voice to support community, industry, and partners in their advocacy effort. There's no direct financial uh um costs to the municipality. The recommended input is attached. And I'm going to assume that we will put it up on the screen to discuss if if council should so desire. Um, but it's important uh in a summary point to to mention that. What we have done here is the municipal response, so from our organization, from the information we have to date. And is not reflective of any sort of. Community engagement or stakeholder engagement as performed by the municipality, because we did not do that, we were not tasked with that. This is Park's proposal, and what we have done on our draft here is give council a starting point. Uh, for discussions, um, and really um is a. Basically, an endorsement of good engagement, and that's what we're hoping to see um parks continue down the path of. So I am open to any questions that you may be, I may be able to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Greathead. Uh, Counselor Wilson first up.
Sorry, uh. Um, could you just repeat that last section uh you suggested about uh consultation with any other associations or groups that?
Yeah, so there there have been questions about whether or not we reached out to PHA Association, for example, to create this position. And and no, we did not. This position is based on our knowledge to date and and our professional, you know, education and experience, so. So this is not a position meant to reflect the greater community. This is a position meant to reflect the organization's. Uh, standing on what has happened today and where we'd like to see it go. And it is entirely meant to stimulate council in any discussions uh you may have. Council may remember that um several months ago, one of the points was should the municipality engage on an engagement process? And I believe there was a ten thousand dollar line item perhaps to engage on six months of engagement of of used engage a lot. Um, but but we did not do that. That was not accepted by council uh or moved by council rather. And this isn't our process. So what we've done is tried to advise. How we would like to see the process unfold and what we'd like to see uh from the end point. But it does not reflect any engagement done within the community or any state.
Thank you. Please continue.
Uh, thank you for that, and and uh. You know, I do I do have concerns that we haven't engaged uh completely with the with the community above the topic, but. Uh, you just suggested this isn't our process, and I agree with you, it is not our process, and I'm uncomfortable um being. Moving towards a quick decision on our municipal position on PHAs. When we're also in um discussions um. Uh, gaining or requesting working towards land use and planning. Um, jurisdiction being put in hands of the municipality. I I think that this is not, does not need to be a quick. Uh, decision. It doesn't need to go to parks for um. For something they 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 feel like they want to tie up that for um land use and planning is transition. Um, I'm more comfortable. I I really appreciate all the information that there's a lot of stuff I'd like to comment on regarding uh. The the document, but but again, I I'm in more supportive of. Um, requesting that the moratorium on PHAs remain as is. Until the municipality can then publicly engage with its residents. Request request information, build a build a public uh position on PHAs, not be. Put to a deadline to to submit something to parks. To who knows what they they're going to use that information for. I I don't want to be held to a position uh under the uh. Yeah, I just don't want to be held to a position under the current timeline that we've been allowed.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson. Counselor Hall.
Looking at me, so help speak. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I agree with Counselor Wilson, because as. Uh, resident who doesn't have a PHA can look at all these recommendations, but I don't actually know. If they make sense, and we haven't had any input for it from uh our PHA residents in town. Like, for example, that twenty percent of these little floor states, like, is that reasonable? I don't actually know.
Thank you, Counselor Hall, Counselor Geller.
I also agree with Counselor Wilson. I think that we do need to engage with our PHAs and our residents um. We need to be outside. Uh, we need to hear from them about the ones, and um I think we received a letter. Um, from the PHAs asking us to reconsider to have them.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demora. With respect, I am inclined to agree with the recommendation. Uh, this is not our process. I don't know when Parks Canada will make its determination. I can accept that some of the particular items. Could be amended here by by council. Or alternatively, everything after. The first principle about public input and transparency of decision making. Could be dropped. I I would hesitate to do that, but. I think what this response says is that. If this was our issue, if we did have jurisdiction. Here's what we would do. It's a land use development process which. To which principles of natural justice apply. That means. An open public process with the opportunity to be heard. And that the decision-making authority, which again is not us. Conduct their deliberations in full view of the public. And so that's the response. Uh, do you want it our response by the end of September? There it is. Conduct this process in this fashion. Um, if we want to add to that, by the way, we think there should be grandfathering, which I think is fair. Scrub that word a rulelessly approved. If something has been approved through a process. Um, then that should be grandfathered. Um, and there are a number of instances where where that is the case. Uh, so it's, it is um. The second of the of the vote points after the the principles of. Natural justice. So that that is simply a grandfathering provision. I think that um. The question of whether or not there is. Independent access to the unit is similarly a question of approvals having been granted should not be revoked. Um, I believe the the last one about kitchens is similar if it's been approved. There are clearly definitions that are required for the benefit of everyone. I agree that the twenty percent is perhaps um. Arbitrary and and could be reconsidered, so that could come out. But overall, I think the statement that we could give right now publicly is that. This issue demands an open public process with the opportunity to be heard, whether we conduct that process or somebody else. And let's get that out now, and I think that works to the benefit of. Those affected businesses and to the benefit of the community. So I'm not at all opposed to. Deferring the question. For deferring our our decision on it. I think we could say right now. This process demands to be open and transparent and. People have an opportunity to to be heard, and the publics have to be, or be the. The decisions have to be considered in the public realm, not behind closed doors. I'd be prepared to make that. Today, either at this meeting or this afternoon's meeting, which will be held this evening.
Counselor Wilson.
Uh, I think I can get on board with that. Uh, I think you suggested striking the uh the item uh about twenty percent. That usable floor area. I don't think that was rushed. Uh, I don't see the basis behind it. I could ask, I guess, a good question to administration regarding that. Where where the twenty percent uh used the floor area came from, but also annual inspections is concerning. Um. I don't know of any other business in any community that uh has. The title government come in and inspect your business uh or municipal government, so that's. Grossly overstepping like five C. I I think that if you have a uh operating business. You can operate your business like that. That should, I guess, fall within the lines of grandfathering, like. We we people have applied for business licenses. There is no uh. Um, expired expiration date on those business licenses, and they should be. Uh, they can, they should be able to carry on as such as uh originally applied for and approved. Um, without being subject to annual inspection.
Deputy Deputy Mayor Demora, if I can on that particular point and appreciate counsel, sorry for my bad arrival.
Deputy Deputy Mayor Demota, if I can on that particular point and appreciate counsel sorry for my bad arrival. Understand that Director Reed did the introductions. I'm happy to be able to help and provide comment on any of the recommendations. And again. These are administrations starting finding counsel and certainly take them per fruition. I'm happy to answer any. Think uh questions about the thinking behind any particular points. Um, particularly though first on on compliance inspections. Uh, one of the concerns that administration had heard was that there were people operating outside of their approved license. And that their uh current system is really only on a complaint basis. And that there is a concern of life safety. Uh, and I was just, uh, administration is aware of a number of businesses actually that do. Uh, are subject to regular inspections. Uh, certainly childcare facilities are subject to more than annual inspections. Um, food processing places and businesses are subject to regular inspections from different agencies. So I think when. There's a understanding when when there are life safety risks uh that. Different types of businesses may have different inspection schedules. Um, administration isn't recommending necessarily. That Parks Canada should be doing inspection. We we actually don't take position on that. But we say that somebody should be doing inspections on a regular basis to ensure that people who are operating. Have received an approval are operating within their approval boundaries on a regular basis and that things don't change. Um, and that people aren't operating outside of their approvals. So on that particular one. We suggest that there are some, many businesses, actually many different types of businesses that receive regular inspection, including maybe transportation companies. Probably have pretty regular inspections from different government agencies to ensure that they're operating even at all. On some of the others, uh, the gross floor area really was administration's attempt to find an area that would be. More appropriate. I think Parks Canada, it's just the ten percent of the gross floor area, which is uh gross floor area. To my understanding is a would not provide as much. Space in the home as usable for area would um and twenty percent higher than ten percent. So administration is attempting to find some way to say, okay, this should be. Uh, PHA should be a smaller proportion of the house uh than a secondary suite. Um, but maybe not as small as parts you suggested. So again, that's just some of the thinking on a couple of the different points. Again, happy to answer any. Uh, thinking about some of the other parts. Um, the other point that I would raise, it's not contained in the background of the report, but back in. July, administration brought a recommendation council about uh how we might develop a municipal position on the first. Set of regulations that Parks put out. At the time, I think we recommended certain internal review, not going out to the public. Um, and we suggested that an external review or a full process. Uh, would likely be in the range of twenty thousand dollars. I just had to flip back to that report to see what it said. Um, I would estimate about six months in time. So if this were our process. Um, our advice to you would be that we shouldn't set aside twenty thousand dollars to. Run a proper process and expect it to take at least six months to properly engage all the affected parties, which doesn't just include. PHA owners. Um, as as we should note, this isn't our process. And so we can probably only give advice to others. On what a proper process could or should look like. Um, but again, that wasn't the scope of this report was sort of. What does administration think? Because Parks has asked the municipality to give an opinion. And councils can full control of what that opinion should be. Administration is suggesting this is starting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Are there any further recommendations, adjustments or additions, deletions? That councils would like to see to this document? Again, Mr. Mayor, do we have a deadline for this? I know that Parks Canada has been waiting for a response for a while.
Uh, administratively, Parks has said that uh through October, I think in their initial letter uh to us on the renewed regulations and when we asked. Whether they would uh be maintaining the current moratorium. They said that they would uh like to have them in sports salon side at the end of September. Uh, knowing that things changed because of the power situation. Um, I asked if from early October, like the first week of October would be fine. It said it would be. Um, I think councils within its right to ask for an extension to have additional input. Um, I think. Council have to decide what you would do with an extension. It was the extension to say we should ex. Park should not make any decisions until this is the municipality's jurisdiction. Uh, part which is, I think, uh, an alternative is containing the report. Um, parks should uh. You know, open up the system until the Chinese is in the spell or park should make no changes and maintain the moratorium. Uh, and allow another six months uh and appropriate resources to do a robust and appropriate consultation. So I think counselors needs to go, if you're not going to give an opinion, then what is the process you would like to see happen? And and ask parks for that process.
Yeah, I think at this point, uh, you know, not to take uh the gravity of making the situation. I know that there's people whose. Uh, house purchases or other things, uh, you know, might be affected by this and the moratorium. Um, is hurting a lot of decision making, but at the same time, we want to do what's right for the greater good. Um, and also. Give this the the right amount of attention that it deserves and, you know. Considering the length of the meeting that we've had today and and the other stuff that we need to work through. Although probably not as conversant as this morning, I just, I'm not sure if we're we're giving this the proper attention. It means that we need another week. Uh, to come back if councils want to go and work on this. Um, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying that's what we need to do. Um, I'm here to to help. Final direction. Counsel.
Um, just a couple of things that I I. I'm not sure how this should be on the record, but it is really not our municipal position currently. It's our starting point. Uh, so I think it should be wrapped in municipal position. Um, but but again, I'm not, I would not be, I'm. I'm comfortable in making some changes um suggested by Mayor Ireland, um, carving out fear on to this. Um, but I am not comfortable moving quickly to a um. RFD and regular health meeting today. I don't think we've given it enough uh public attention. Um. And just as if, just as we did with the utility um presentation earlier. I I think we deserve to let um the residents review this, respond to it. Call their counselor, write a letter, whatever they choose to do, but it, but it is, uh, it is unfortunately. Rush and I I think it deserves some time to uh to do.
Thank you. So do, does, go ahead, Counsel Melnick.
And just final thoughts on this of my own. I'd be happy to have this in the public realm for another. Couple of weeks so that uh the community has a chance to review it and get feedback to us and. Perhaps have other suggestions which are uh more pertinent. Quite honestly, I'm not um as. Comfortable with looking at these regulations, having not operated a private home accommodation. And uh would like to have more of an opportunity to understand some of the concerns with these uh. With the changes both that Parks has proposed and the position that we have here.
I'm not kind of commenting, but you're actually operating over there, but uh. There's lots going on. I won't do that. So um, today is the twenty seventh. Our next regular meeting is um next week on the fourth. Uh, followed by another committee meeting and regular meeting. So how does um counsel, how will counsel work to proceed? Like to accept this as information again and move forward with the motion to defer um.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Demota, just around your process and what council hope to accomplish, you could uh. You could uh table consideration of this to the next regular, sorry, to the next committee of the whole meeting. Uh, which I think would be the eleven. Uh, you could uh refer. This set of recommendations to the next regular council meeting on the fourth. Both of those provides a space and opportunity for the public to invite comment to council members. Um, I suppose going on the fourth means that council would be in regular council and in a position to. Uh, accept change, amend the rec, you know, the the recommendations and then to formalize that and provide it to parks. Uh, or if you were at the eleven, you would be able to do the same sort of thing, except here from the public, whatever else. Uh, and then you wouldn't be able to formalize your position until the meeting of the eighteen. So, you know, you could table this, table discussion of this to a future committee meeting. Or you could refer this forward, sort of continue along, but if that would come, I would certainly not recommend this to this afternoon. Uh, but it could go a week from now on the fourth. So refer to regular council on the fourth or to table until the.
Thank you for um that insight. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Just to give it a a chance to be heard, um, I. I'm aware of the prevailing breeze. Nonetheless, um. I am prepared to make a motion that. Committee recommend that council approve. As a municipal position to be conveyed to Parks Canada. The items enumerated under the principle of public input and transparency of decision making. And direct administration to communicate that to Parks Canada. So that is everything in that first box. I cannot imagine that. Council will deviate from the position that for a change of this nature. The principles of natural justice should be part of the process. And whether it's our process or not. People are entitled to adequate notice. They're entitled to full disclosure and that might include the next bullet point of vote. What is the evidence that this so drastically impacts residential housing? That's disclosure that should be made available. An opportunity to be heard is critical. And finally, the parties ultimately deciding the issue. Should conduct their deliberations in full view of the public and those impacted by the decision. I think we could make that determination this afternoon. We could leave all the rest of it out. So any discussion of. Particular response to anything, it's not as critical as the process. But the process is absolutely critical. And if the process might unfold, starting October first regardless. Why would we not say now, this is the process that ought to be followed and it ought to be followed now? It, I think that respects. The essence of the request by the directors of the Jasper Home Accommodation Association. They want the right to be heard. And we're saying yes, in any process, you are entitled to that right. So I I think we could, if council chooses, limit. Our approved municipal response to those items in that first block and get that out the door. Um, tomorrow. And the rest, we'll wait and see. If we don't want to make comments about. Grandfathering or definitions, that's fine. There will be a public process, we hope, where all of that can be discussed. So, uh, I'm sorry, um, is that, that was a long soliloquy. Um, but I think it was a relatively short motion if you were able to capture it all.
So if I was going to request that you repeat that.
My motion is that, oops. The motion is that committee recommend council approve as a municipal position. Those items enumerated in the first box of the draft. Municipal response prepared by administration and presented to council.
The one that, the one that refers to public input and transparency decision. We have that motion on for Counsel Wilson.
Mayor Ireland, would you um be able to refer the amendment that includes uh. The third box, uh, suggesting that, and and suggesting this to add comfort and security to uh. Current PHA operators uh that. Um, where a leaseholder has in good faith sought and received approval for a part of PHA under Parks Canada processes. Um, and continues to operate within the limits of the approval they received from Parks Canada. The PHA should continue to be valid until such time um. The until such time uh there has been discontinued use for a period of twelve months.
I am good with that. I'm good with that one and several others, but I I thought the hesitation here was. Not to get into the details, just to deal with the process, but I mean, could have a separate motion for that, but I. I am inclined, although I would support a separate motion about that, I'm inclined then to say. Let's stick with the principles related to process and not dive into the details because those details. Will get configured and if the processes run appropriately on any of them. But. Subject to that, if you want to make a motion to include that, I will vote in favor. And there are a number of other ones that I would vote in favor of. But I understand a bit of a willingness at the table to set some principles and give time for the details to emerge.
And that's where I said I support that initial motion. I'd like to move forward with that based on the principles. Any more feedback? Debate? May call question? All in favor? Now posed. Oh, are there any pros? Okay, uh, that's unanimous and clear. Does anybody else have a motion in this regard? Counsel Wilson.
I believe that uh the previous motion um. Bring on uh great public uh input and discussion. Um, but that in that public input and discussion, I I don't feel that it should threaten. Um, businesses that are, that have already been approved. So I would like to make motion that we also as a municipality. Uh, support that uh it's the third item there. I'll I'll repeat it that uh um. That where at least holder has in good faith sought and received approval of uh for a PHA under Parks Canada process. And continues to operate within the limits of their approval they received from Parks, uh, Parks Canada, sorry. The PHA approval should continue to be valid until such time that um the business has been discontinued for period of moments.
And just to be clear, the opening portion of that motion is committee is directing to council. Anybody, would anyone like to debate that motion? Does everyone understand? Mr. Mayor.
It's a day for friendly amendments. Um. My only hesitation is in words good faith. I think that good faith is to be assumed. And so I might be inclined to strike those words. I'll just say where a leaseholder has sought and received approval. They should be grandfathered. What do we add by saying good faith is? Does a leaseholder then have to somehow demonstrate that if they've gone through the process and gotten a through there, that should be good for something.
And I think it's right sought as well. I saw it as they have received, they've been approved. Yep, I am. Thank you for the amendment.
Just to speak, I made to the amended motion of friendly amendment. In my view. that encompasses all approvals that leaseholders have received. So in effect, um, there is an independent article dealing with independent access. So if you've received an approval, that would be covered. There is one dealing with kitchens. If you receive such an approval, you would be covered. Whatever approvals have been issued um, were approvals under a process, and people should be able to rely on a proper administration process. I, I think it, it is the right one to, to focus on, because it covers all of the other issues.
I appreciate that, the additional, uh, uh, clarification and comment. I have one to send. I agree with you.
Okay. So. The committee directs council.
Uh, sorry, could you repeat the motion?
Um, well, I haven't, yeah, I was gonna read it up here, but I just wanted to.
I think everybody, well, I have read it a couple of times. I won't read it.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, but committee director.
All right. If we understand the motion, all in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you, Council Wilson. Are there any further motions to be made to private home accommodations position? All right. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Demoto, just a, a question really for those who are more intimately knowledgeable about existing processes. On the, on the final page of the draft position, the ultimate box deals with non-conforming secondary suite PHAs. Is it the case that some PHAs have been approved, which could also have been approved as secondary suites? Is that what that's coming on?
Your worship, I'm not sure that there are any that ha- that have been approved that way. Uh, I think what the intent of Parks' original, uh, and again, you know, this is only commenting on their original position that they put forward, not any position that they might revise. Um, but was to essentially provide the opportunity for somebody who had, who was interested in developing a secondary suite to also potentially operate as a PHA. So apply it almost as an incentive to say, well, if you meet the higher standard of a secondary suite, we'll be willing to also let you, uh, operate as a PHA, provide additional flexibility. So I think that that's what we understood from their initial, um, suggestion. I don't know. I don't know that we would be able to obtain information on, uh, whether or not there are any PHAs that meet the full standard of a secondary suite. I just, I don't know that we have that information. I'm not sure that Parks has that information, to be frank. Uh, we don't have a great deal of background information on approved secondary suites in the municipality. We do have a good database of approved PHAs, not that there's a business licensing or permit. There isn't just a model requirement for secondary suites.
I, I ask because the wording from the Parks Canada document says some existing non-conforming PHAs resemble secondary suites. Does that imply that there are some existing non-conforming approved PHAs? So they have been approved as non-conforming. So I, I erase that because I, I think that then falls into the motion we just passed. If, if they've been approved, they've been approved. And if they've been approved as non-conforming, do they fall within the motion we just passed?
Well, your worship, I think, um, I think it is unlikely that Parks would have approved something as non-conforming. It might be the case, it typically is the case in land use, uh, matters, or something may have been approved under an old set of rules and regulations. And that development, let's say, becomes non-conforming as rules and regulations change. So it was approved in the past, the rules have changed, and you, uh, may still be operating under the old rules. Um, and so I think it is, but I don't think somebody would show up to approving body and say, this doesn't conform. I would like to have a approving as a non-conforming. So do you get that? I think that that's what Parks was implying there, that there are some PHAs that have been approved at some time in the past under old rules, and they look kind of the same as secondary suites, but they don't likely meet all of the requirements of a proper legal secondary suite.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you looking for some information to? I was just wondering if you're looking for some information to follow up on that.
I am, I am content, I'm
Okay.
wondering whether Council Wilson is going to renew his earlier suggestion of continuation for more authority before we the subject, but I agree that to Council Wilson.
Well, we can always come back to that if you want to readdress that. Said, I believe that, uh, Council Keller, he wants to move on to the next point of business, which is, uh, seven point seven, so we want my, so if we can, if you want to come back, I'll, I'll, um, yeah, if you need some more about, I'm not uniquely in this puzzle. Um, we can move on to seven point seven. If that's okay with us, Council. Okay, go ahead, Councilor Keller.
I received some calls from, uh, the business, yes, three quite concerned that utility project, uh, which Shaw for fiber optic is taking place, starting, I believe, on October fifth, and a number of business. Um, we're under the impression we're shutting down Patricia Street, but I have talked to Mr. Given, we find the only information, but I think it would be good for all of council to hear exactly what's happening.
All right, uh, I guess we would be directing that information request to you, Mr. Given.
Sure, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Demoto. I know Mr. Grayhead has also been involved, um, but, uh, very briefly, municipality has a requirement for anybody that wants to do works on public property, uh, roadways or sidewalks, uh, to, um, seek approval to undertake that work. We have some requirements for public safety and for signage and for traffic accommodation. And so what people are seeing is a contractor, a private contractor doing work for another party, in this case, that Shaw, um, giving out the public notice that we require them to give out, uh, to members of the public about how they're going to accommodate traffic and other things. And so this is not a municipal project, uh, but the municipality has requirements that apply to all contractors for when they want to close roadways or portions of roadways. Um, and so I think the contractor's been going around town informing people about that, um, and we're not in control of the content that the contractor might be delivering or the way they deliver it. We do have some sign, uh, some information from the contractor and some, some maps and diagrams that really show um, where the work is going to be happening. I can put those on screen for council and the public that wasn't mailed out to council earlier today. Um, but I think it's nice to say, uh, first that there will not be any of the roadways. I'm going to look at Director Grayhead, just to make sure I don't go offline. Um, other than the alley behind the TV bank, all other impacted roadways will maintain the flow of traffic, other than maybe a couple of small periods of interruption. So there's not going to be a road that's closed for any extended period of time, um, unless Director Grayhead has additional information that he can add. Um, John, why don't you go ahead and then, uh, maybe what I could do is I could, uh, I can put up the maps so the public can see what we're referencing. So John, I'll hand the mic over to you and then I'll put up the maps.
Uh, thank you, uh, CEO Given, um, Deputy Mayor and Council, there will be some disruptions, uh, some of the vaults and their locations are almost dead center of the roadway. So instead of a complete road closure, they're going to be closing one lane, and there will be some temporary detours around there, uh, specifically, uh, there won't, there will not be a left turn off of Patricia going, uh, up Elm. Uh, that's going to have to be remain, um, just kind of a single lane access. And same as, um, uh, there'll be a, no southbound towards Knott, I guess, um, on my yet south of Geeky, uh, for this, for the duration of the days. Just because the, um, we don't want to get into a counter flow of traffic. Uh, so there will be some minor diversions, but no major, um, uh, upsets or, and no, um, complete road closures at all during that time. We did meet with the, um, uh, contractor yesterday, and there will be some areas where manholes will be installed, um, and they will be putting road plates um, uh, when they're not actively working on site to maintain the flow of traffic. So they're hovering with some one inch thick eight by fourteen foot, uh, steel plates to go over the open excavations and maintain the traffic as necessary.
I hope that that, uh, meets the information attempts of council. You now have the maps that you can reference if any constituents are talking with you. Uh, but it is the contractor's responsibility to ensure that this information gets out to the public. Uh, the municipality does what we can to reinforce that. So if there's a closure coming as a result of any private work that's being done, we will help sort of share that message out, but it is our message to craft and create that council has full information, hopefully, of this as well.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Information being available so, so quickly. Right. Is everyone satisfied? Okay. Um, Mr. Given, we move on to, uh, motion action. See if there's, uh.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Demoto, uh, appreciate that it's been a long meeting, so I'll sort of run through pretty rapid fire. You can see that there's a bunch of updates to dates. There are a number of items that were uh, September. Of course, September had some challenges in the early part, uh, and so obviously, we're not going to meet that for number them. Uh, and we're proposing to update the dates for those to October. Uh, I believe we delivered, although it wasn't here for how it, uh, went, but we did deliver the Petro Canada items. That one can come off. If there is any action, uh, direction from council, then that would replace that item. Um, could note that under the Alberta Japan Twinning Municipalities Association, number four profiled the annual J's tuning relationship on the website. That's done, and you can see a profile of that on our new, uh, municipal website. Um, the item of developing a municipal position on private home accommodations from July twelfth, um, I think has been delivered. I think there's more work that will come that council's given some direction. Although I don't know that council made, I'll let them think about it, that there was any other motion to refer the rest of those proposed position statements to anywhere. Uh, and council may choose not to, but in a case, I think that this item from July twelfth's been done. Uh, as has, uh, the, the February second item on the utility model review. Again, appreciate that there may have been some action coming over the meeting today, uh, but that has been delivered. Um, and then, uh, down further, the community conversations in the justice education section, uh, session, that is happening and is scheduled for council for tomorrow, I believe, and then members of senior administration. The Cabin Creek Traffic Safety Item, uh, I know that, uh, Director Grayhead, the circulated information council about the approach to the administration that we're taking on that. So that one is underway, and uh, so we're recommending it could be deleted unless council feels that there's a need for a more formalized report and other specific actions. Um, and the emergency advisory committee update, there was, uh, direction at the committee meeting before the, sorry, at the uh, meaning before the power came on, uh, and then, um, and the situation changed for a, a list of a number of different items. Uh, administration's sense here is that, that uh, unless council sees a continued need to dig up the information uh, about who had what on September thirteenth, you know, at that time, um, that we might have other areas that we would, uh, direct, and so administration's recommending that that one pop as well. That's the recommendation, and, uh, my motion would be to update motion action item list as noted. Um, or if there are other items that you wanted to see kept on there or changed in terms of times, you could note that.
Thank you, CA, well given. Does anybody have anything to add or? Okay, I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor.
Sorry to interject, I just the, um, request from the museum. I'm sorry, if you addressed that and I missed it. Otherwise, that still shows for September. Did, did you say that was done?
Uh, your worship, I didn't, and I would have to look to, uh, Director Grayhead about what the current status of that is. I'm not sure that the museum has approached us with a specific and final request. I think, uh, Director Grayhead looked at some opportunities, but we're sort of waiting for the museum to come back to us. John, do you want to have that?
That's exactly correct, uh. Mr. Given, um, we have reached out to, uh, Herb Robinson from the, um, uh, museum, and, uh, they were looking into options on their end, uh, and he knows that I'm available to assist with whatever he needs, uh, but there has been no further asks.
I just wonder, if we can do this, whether, or our motion action is, maybe we change that to November, some other date. Not maybe that's September or anything.
Your worship, the administration, other than, uh, whether, uh, council, I know it's, uh, on the museum board groups, and council might have a better suggestion. Again, we are waiting the, the museum to come back to us, and so we would be happy to get to any other time that council would think of over it to sort of check back in on, I don't know, uh, council might have a suggestion.
That, I was going to bring up in the next, uh, point that there is a museum meeting tomorrow and that the, uh, Wildlife Den, they've got a, a six-month reprieve on moving in, so I think it might be prudent to have that go to November um, or even October twenty twenty-two, um, so that it doesn't get lost in our, in our action list. And, uh, I'll encourage the, uh, museum to, um, get a hold of Mr. Grayhead, uh, as soon as possible.
Good, so we're going to defer that. Just change it to, I'll tell you. Council, or Council, what's your?
I apologize if I missed it when, when we were speaking, but, uh, on the last page under community conversations, environmental responsibility, there's a cross out of the last part of the, uh, of the, uh, motion that I just wondered.
I would have to look and see. Uh, I can say that administration is already exploring, we're hot into developing recommendations for the twenty twenty-three budget, and so that's something that, uh, council will uh, will see as a recommendation at the budget time, uh, with respect to capacity. Um, along with other, you know, staffing recommendations to council to do, because I think that that's why that was dropped there. Um, yeah, I, we can certainly check back in on that, but, uh, administration has already discussed this and is going to be bringing forward recommendations, so.
Thank you. All right, um, we've exhausted that. Um, may I make a recommendation for, uh, agenda item number nine, if any council, uh, has a, um, council reports that we incorporate that in the next meeting under agenda item eight and move on to, uh, agenda item ten to expedite the, sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, right, sorry, we need a motion to approve the, uh, changes to the action on this. Counsel, all. All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Sorry about that. So, uh, is everyone okay with my suggestion for number nine? Okay. So, uh, upcoming events, uh, the mayor alluded to, uh, International Tourism Day, which is today. Um, hopefully, we can share some tourism within our own community after this meeting, if we have some time. Um, most importantly, I think for this. Most importantly, I think for this week, for this month, for this year. National Day for Truth and Recognition, which is Friday, September three. Again, I'd like to invite the broader community to join us. And the information you both are on our side. The Jasper Folk Festival on October first. Glad that they were able to revisit that and change that up. And then. The Jasper, our Chamber of Commerce Center meeting is October twelfth, be assumed. And that was at Wicked Cup on October ninth. I believe that there was a change in the. Fundraising golf tournament. Has that been set for a date on October second or? Right, that's for victim. Services, which is better. The crisis team, yes, sorry. So the crisis team. Golf tournament is this Sunday coming up, on the second day after the Folk Fest. All right. So we've concluded that portion of the agenda. We were scheduled to go in Denver. Today, and I think even though we were, we have an obligation, a contractual obligation, we can postpone that. Council?
We have only one party to a contract, contractual obligation. I think that we should see consent from the other party.
That's right. Your worship, if it's, the HR committee's had an opportunity to meet and have some feedback for me, or like share, I'm happy to receive that by email from the HR committee. I think that in camera that my employer had any direction they wanted to give me, that'd be required, but if there's anything else, I'll see one, but I'm happy to receive that by email.
Great. So everyone, with that, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for keeping us in line on that one. And so then that would move us to agenda item twelve. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Right, all in favor? So I think we're going to take a brief recess so that we can re-chair ourselves. The next meeting will be moving into our regular meeting. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a suggestion more time?
Let's, let's give ourselves ten minutes, get reorganized and sort of fresh.
Okay, so.
Four oh five.
Four oh five, we will commence our regular meeting, unfortunately. Thank you.